This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Today is October 13th, 2020. This is our monthly meeting of the City of Kingston Planning Board. My name is Suzanne Cahill. I am the Planning Director for the City of Kingston and the organizer for our virtual meeting. Before we begin our meeting, we want to go over a few meeting guidelines to help us navigate this system as efficiently and respectfully as possible. We ask that members of the public and the press remain muted and off-camera for the length of the meeting. As the organizer, I reserve the right to mute anyone who unmutes themselves. Board members and city staff will control their own mute button. As good practice, we ask that you mute yourself if you are not speaking to avoid background noise and feedback. If a board member or staff wishes to speak, they will raise their hands. The chairperson will call on them before they speak by stating their name clearly for our audio listeners. Board member will then unmute themselves, state their name, and speak clearly, muting after finish. All of our meetings are recorded. Both video and written transcriptions will be made available to the public on the city's website at a later date. In lieu of public speaking during the monthly meeting, we requested all comments to be received by 2:00 p.m. on Friday, October 16th, 2020. Comments have been emailed to Suzanne Cahill, Planning Director, at skhill@kingston-ny.gov, mailed or placed in the drop box outside of City Hall. Written comments received to any specific item will be recognized at the beginning of said discussion. The public is invited to speak via audio connection at the time the hearing is called. For all those who are joining by audio and wish to speak for a hearing, please text the following number: 845-443-0416 with the name, agenda item, and address. Again, text your name and the agenda item number and address to 845-443-0416 if you wish to be called to speak for a public hearing. All comments received by the deadline were distributed to the full board. During the meeting, the chairman will announce the names of all who submitted comments and where they can be located for public viewing on the City of Kingston website with each application. If you have any audio issues, please send a text message to the following number: I will repeat the number again, but be aware that phone calls will not be answered during the meeting. The number again to text is 845-443-0416. As the organizer for today's meeting, I reserve the right to lock and pause the meeting to eject anyone who has behaved inappropriately or to enter into attorney-client conference if needed. Materials for this meeting may be found on the City of Kingston website: Once you are on the homepage, scroll to the bottom under Meetings, and where you see Planning Board Meeting posted, click on the Agenda Packet. Thank you for your patience during these difficult times, and on behalf of the Planning Board, I wish you and your family good health. I will now turn the floor over to Chairman Wayne Platt to call the meeting to order at 6:06 p.m. Wayne?
Thank you, Suzanne. Just, I've got some notes, text messages here. Chuck Palacco, can you hear us? Okay. Robert, do you have the unencrypted version yet?
I do not.
Did you get any email from me?
Yeah, it's all encrypted where I have to log into the city's website with the city's system.
If you make up a password, it would let you in. I can try sending it from my personal email to you. Hold on.
Because everything I get from the city is a PDF, but that one for some reason.
I'm gonna try to, Robert. Hold on.
Everything that you sent to me today, Kyle, was just a PDF.
The most recent ones I sent are PDF, but you're still getting it encrypted.
Just that one particular document. That's okay. I don't need to hold up the meeting.
Oh, that's okay, Robert. Is that the one you got from Donna?
No, it was from Kyle, I believe. That's all right, Wayne. Just let's move forward.
I'll send it now from my personal email, and Wayne, if you want to start, you should get it. You should get this one.
Back from somebody too on there. Is anybody getting that? Okay. Introductions. My name is Wayne Platt, Chairman. We also have Charles Palacco. Can you hear us, Chuck? All right, we're working on that. Robert Jacobson.
Here.
Mary Jo Wiltshire. Matt Gillis.
Here.
Kevin Roach.
Here.
Vince Archer.
Here.
Katie Bowarski.
Here.
Okay, we also have Suzanne Cahill, the Planning Director.
Here.
Assistant Planner is Kyla D-Day. We have Common Council Liaison to the Planning Board, Alderman Don Tolloman.
Hello.
Is Dan Gartenstein here with us?
I do not see him yet, Wayne.
Okay. Uh, before we get started, Item Number 17 and Number 20. Number 17, this is for those who wish to speak on anything today, is 139 Cornell Street. That has been removed because this is a common council matter, not a planning board matter. And also, Item Number 20 is the discussion on Abiel Street, and that has been postponed at the request of the applicant. Also, at this time, I'd like to acknowledge that comments that we have received will be posted on the city's website. Moving on to Item Number 1 is the adoption of the September 21st, 2020 Planning Board Decisions. Everybody's had an opportunity to take a look at that. Any questions or comments, deletions, additions? Okay, seeing none, this time I'll make a motion that we adopt the September 21st, 2020 Planning Board Minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mary Jo Wiltshire. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palacco? We're still working on that. So Kevin, you're gonna hop in then. Robert Jacobson?
Mary?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, that is adopted. Okay, moving on, we're in public now. Item Number 2, 356 Broadway, Special Permit Renewal for Operating Rooming House. Section Block is 56.43, Section 8-61.1, Secret Determination, Zone C2, Mixed Use Overlay District, Heritage Area, Ward 5, TVG Group LLC is the applicant owner. Sue, do we have?
Hi, yes, I'm Gillyard.
Okay. How are you?
I'm fine. How are you?
Sue, do we have anybody wanting to speak on this at all besides the applicant or owner?
No, I do not.
Alrighty. Okay, this item is--
Thank you for joining the City of Kingston Common Council at our finance audit meeting. It is Wednesday on September 13th.
All right, this application was tabled. That's a September meeting because the applicant was not present, but-- Right? Any changes to the current situation there?
No.
Original approval will be in September 2015, and the applicant has returned for annual renewal. Anything from staff on this, Sue? Everything's good?
Everything was fine.
Okay. Do you have in here a term for the special permit that would need to be discussed? Does staff have any recommendation on that? That, or is that by one, by annual?
Requires to renew annually at a minimum.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any questions? Okay. At this time, under Seeker, this is a Type 2 action, so no further review of the board is required at this time. At this time, I'll make a motion to Wayne Platt to make a motion that we approve Item Number 2 for-- All--
Second.
I have a second by Robert Jacobson. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palacco, are you there? Okay, moving on. Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, that is adopted. Very much for coming tonight.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Chuck is rebooting. I just got a text on that. All right. Moving on to Item Number 3. 131 Fair Street. It's a Special Permit Renewal to Operate 5-Room Bed and Breakfast. Section Block and Lot is 56.107-3-4. Secret Determination, Zone R2. It's in the Fair Street Historic District. Ward 5, Alecha Kowalska is the applicant owner. Is there any-- Sue, do we have anybody besides the applicant owner wishing to speak?
No, I do not.
Okay. And the applicant has-- she's not here tonight, and that's, that's fine. That was, she was told that she should not have to be here. Everything's good from staff level on that, Sue?
Absolutely, yes.
And she's had favorable inspections from building safety, correct?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions on this?
No.
And we are bound by annual renewals of this too, right, Sue?
Yes, you are.
All right, so, under Seeker, this is also a Type 2, so no further action of the, of the board is required. At this time, I'll make a motion that we, this is Wayne Platt again, make a, approve Item Number 3 for a period of one year with all original conditions carried forward. Do I have a second on that? Second by Robert. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palacco? Okay, still working there. Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin, you're a yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that is approved. Thank you. Okay, Item Number 4. Is 335 Wall Street in Prenz 34 in North Front Street. Special Permit Renewal to Operate 2-Room Hotel. Section Block and Lot is 4831-1- Secret Determination, Zone C2, Mixed Use Overlay District, Heritage Area and Stockade Historic District. Ward 2, Girardi Associates is the applicant owner. Anybody on the line, Sue, with this for comment?
No.
Okay. Applicant is not here tonight on, with us. Sue, I see here that staff needs to confirm if he still resides there. Is that still pending?
Yes, we would just make that a condition, please.
Anybody have any questions with this? And building safety is good with it too, Sue? I'm sorry?
Yes.
All right. Under Seeker. Type 2 action again, so no further review of the board is required. And this, Sue, is this annual renewals as well?
Uh, let me look here real quick. I believe-- No, you can do this for a longer period of time.
All right. Okay, I see that. It was renewed back in 2017 for three years.
Right.
Do we, okay, do you want to go with another three years? Is that what you're recommending?
I would recommend that, yes. I see no reason not to.
How's the rest of the board doing with that? Thumbs up on that? Okay. Looks good. All right. Again, under Seeker, Type 2 action, so no further review of the board is required. At this time, I will make a motion that we approve Item Number 4 with all original conditions carried forward, and also, staff will confirm if he still resides here.
resides here.
So that is a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Hey, Robert Jacobson. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palacco? Still rebooting. Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wilt-- Mary Jo? Hello? Mary Jo? She muted?
She looks frozen.
Yeah.
Yeah, muted.
Mary Jo? Are you a yes on that, Mary Jo?
I just got a text from Mary Jo. She's rebooting. She lost her audio.
Okay. Over to Kevin Roach?
Yes.
And Matt Gillis? I'm sorry, I skipped you there, buddy.
Yes.
And Vince, are we doing Vince Archer? Good?
Yes.
Okay. It is approved. All right. Moving on. Item Number 5. Special Permit Renewal for a Mixed Use Building in the RT Zone. Section Block and Lot is 56.43-2-29.120. Secret Determination, Zone RT, Ronda Historic District, Heritage Area, Ward 9. Stefan Boydanovich is the applicant owner. Anybody besides the applicant owner on this one, Sue?
No, there is not.
Hello?
Stefan?
Yes, I'm sorry, the signal's not great. Yes, hi. Good evening. Good evening, everybody. How are you?
Good. How's everything down there? Good?
Everything is great.
Changes at all?
No changes at all since the last time we spoke a year ago.
Okay. Sue, anything jumping out at you?
On this one, I don't have anything. Just continue as going forward. You are fully occupied, Stefan?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. Then it's just looking at the term, and we would recommend increasing the term and carrying all of the existing conditions forward. Wayne?
What does the board feel about a longer term on there? Last year, last time it was one year. What do we think?
Wayne, I'm fine with two. The applicant has rectified the past issues. It's fully occupied. Last time I went by the building, it was well-maintained.
Okay. Everybody good with a two-year? Okay, all right. Vince, you're good with that?
Yes. I'm back.
All right. Is that Chuck?
Yes, I'm, I'm back. I don't know what the problem was.
All right. Mary Jo, are you still, are you with us again? Oh, not yet. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? All right.
Wayne, this is Sue. Robert, I had a request when you speak. Would you please just identify yourself, Sue? Your name, please.
Okay. This is Wayne Platt again. So, under Seeker. Fire. This, I think, approve. I, for a period of, all original conditions carried forward. Do I have a second?
Wayne?
Yes.
Wayne, can you repeat your motion, please?
Motion is to approve the-- Here. All original carried forward.
Sue?
I didn't catch the, um, the number of years. Can I ask, I am, would you please mute yourselves, or mute myself?
Sue?
Okay, Wayne, can you just repeat the motion again? I didn't catch the number of years.
Okay. Robert, do you have a question first?
Wayne, I think you need to get a little closer to your mic because you keep cutting out when you step back.
Okay. How's this?
Excellent.
So the motion is to approve this for a period of two years, the renewal, with all original conditions carried forward. Uh, do I have a second? And Robert? Robert Jacobson was a second on that. And all in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palacco?
I am a, I am a yes.
Okay, Robert is a yes. I see that. Mary-- Robert, you are a yes?
Yes.
Is Mary Jo Wiltshire there? Okay.
I don't see her.
Still having problems there. Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Kevin Roach?
Yes.
Okay, that is passed. Thank you. Thank you, Stefan. Okay. Time is at 6:26. Okay, moving on. Item Number 6 is 36 Broadway. Also in Prenz, 20-42 Broadway. It's a Special Permit to Establish a Cafe. Section Block and Lot is 56.43-8-61.100. Secret Determination, Zone RLC. It's in Heritage Area. Ward 8, Half Moon Ronda Cafe is the applicant. 30 Realty Corp. is the owner. Do we have anybody besides applicant or owner on this one, Sue?
I do not, not as yet. No.
All right. Uh, who, who is here representing the applicant?
You, by the way. Hi.
All right, could you state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Kyra, and my last name is Tigan.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you.
So do you want to tell us a little bit about what you want to do down there?
Yeah, absolutely. We are bringing in a coffee donut shop. It has no seating. It's a grab-and-go. It was built around, obviously, the current situation with COVID. So we are not changing any of the construction of the place. Everything that we have done with our plans has not, you know, had any issue with like having to change any of the structure of the existing location, other than floors and walls. So it will be a year-round coffee donut shop.
Okay. And signage is only window decals?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, and we already have, Sue, this is Wayne again, we already have enough parking around the back, right, for this?
Yes. There is parking on site.
Okay.
And Wayne, Dan Gartenstein just arrived as well, just, he's, so you're with him?
Councilman Dan Gartenstein is here. Hello, Dan.
Good evening, Wayne. How are you? Sorry, I'm delayed.
That's all right. That's all right. Um. Reading through notes here. Anything else, Sue, that jumps at us that we should, we should consider here?
Uh, you just want to incorporate the board policies, I think, that as are noted within your packets. And also, the term would need to be set on this one. We're suggesting not limiting the term and allowing it to coincide with the use of the cafe or if the ownership changes.
Okay.
We're recommending that way is because we feel that the applicant operator shouldn't have to submit a renewal application fee since if they were located on the opposite side of the street, they would not have to.
Okay. How does the rest of the board feel with that? I'm okay with it.
I think that sounds equitable.
Welcome back. Okay. Robert, you're good with that? Did we lose Robert again?
I'm good.
Um. Anything else, Sue, have to go before landmarks? The, the signage doesn't have to go before them, does it, because it's on the window?
Um, they are going, or did they go, let's see. Heritage. They are going Heritage.
I believe they already went, didn't they?
Yeah, I do. Yeah.
Yes, we already went to Heritage, and we are approved.
Okay. Good. Um. All right. Under Seeker, this is a Type 2 action, so no further review of the board is required. Sue, do you want to read into record what policies will need to be applied to this application?
I will. Give me one second. Okay, the board policies that would be applied here on this application are 4 and 4A, Policy 6, 10, 11, 13, 19, 25, and 26.
Okay. And what was that term again that we, that we come down with here?
It would be that the term would coincide with the use of the cafe use or with the change of ownership.
Okay. So all of those items that Sue has just mentioned, as long, as, as well as the term for the use are, I'm gonna form that into the, of a, of a motion to approve this. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mary Jo Wiltshire. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Uh, Charles Palacco?
Is a yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Gillis?
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved, adopted. Thank you, Kyra. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good evening.
You too.
Bye. Okay, Item Number 7, 294 Wall Street. Special Permit Renewal for Residencies-- Special permit renewal for residential on the upper floors. Section block and lot is forty-eight point three hundred thirty-one dash six dash twenty-four point one hundred. Secret determination, zone C two, mixed-use overlay district, heritage area, Stockade Historic District. It's in Ward two. BRK Group Incorporated is the applicant owner. Uh, is the applicant here?
Yes.
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 Could you state your name, sir?
Belletcon.
How are you doing tonight?
I'm fine, thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Good. Um, any changes here that we should know about?
No, is everything is okay. No, nothing changed, nothing, anything's.
Okay.
One done.
I see that the special permit was for eight residential units. Do you have?
Yes, yes.
Are already completed and they're fully occupied?
Yes, no, only for one is left.
Okay, but you, but you have eight, eight units are built up?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and, uh, building safety applicant, uh, excuse me, inspection, Sue. Uh, is that pending?
Yes, that is pending.
Okay, so we can make that a condition then?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have any questions? Have I missed anything too, Sue?
Just all the original conditions will need to be carried forward, and you will need to determine a term.
The, the original one, uh, the initial term is for one year. Um. The biannual inspection with building safety will be in November. Um, which will be next. So, that would be twenty twenty-two, would be two years from now then? Is that what you're, what I'm seeing here, Sue?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Is the board good with that, to have it expire in November of twenty twenty-two?
Wayne?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson? Why don't we have it, uh, expire a month after that inspection? So then, when he appears in two years, we'll have the inspection done.
I'm good with that. Everybody else?
Yes, that sounds good. Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Rose, good idea, Robert. Um. Okay, um, under seeker, again, it's a type-two action, so no further review of the board is required. Uh, at this time, I will make a motion to approve item number seven, uh, with the approval to, uh, come due in December of twenty twenty-two, with all original conditions carried forward. Uh, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Chuck Palaco. All in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Is a yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Okay, it is approved. Thank you, Mr. Khan.
Much, thanks for everybody.
There now. All right. Item number eight is three oh-one Broadway. Special operated gasoline station. Section block and lot is fifty-six point thirty-four dash eight dash four. Secret determination, zone C two, Ward nine. Speedway LLC is the applicant owner. All right, uh, is the applicant here?
Hi, yes, Alec Lad from Cuddy and Fetter on behalf of Speedway.
Hi, you're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so, the original, the permit was last renewed in twenty fifteen. This is Wayne, yes?
Wayne, we did have one comment on this application from Mr. LeContour.
Yes, I've got that in my hand right here. And that will be available, as I said before, on the, on the city's website, this comment, right? Sue?
It is there now, it's been posted.
Okay. Um, so, the, the last renewal was in twenty fifteen for a period of five years, and the business was formerly owned and operating as Hess. Um, now, I'm being told that there has been some ongoing issues with site maintenance. Uh, specifically, the conditions at the rear of the building along Bond Street, that, that side of the building. Um, we've got complaints of, uh, trash and debris back there, and even a more serious problem of a broken drainage system. Uh, an inspection today. Sue, we have pictures of, I, I'm not, I'm not sure we have pictures now for it, but we did take pictures today of, of some significant ponding in the, in the wake of the recent rainstorm.
Yes.
Okay. Um. Sarah, can you, can you speak to that? I don't know if you're, if you can speak to that or not right now, if you know about that situation?
Uh, yes, I have been aware. Kyle forwarded me some information, and on Friday, we had a team meeting with Speedway. Um, and actually, they, they were on-site today with their contractor, um, looking at both the drainage and paving. The contractor, um, unfortunately, has to come back tomorrow. Um, so we won't have more details, um, until. Uh, but at that time, you know, we'll certainly back out and, um, and provide them an update as they request it.
Okay.
And I know the drainage last year was kind of partially fixed when it was cleaned out, but based on the picture, it looks like it is still, um, something that has to be addressed, which Speedway is aware of, and which they are, uh, like I mentioned, working towards, but I just don't have a, uh, definitive timeline yet.
Okay. Um, I mean, if the board, if we move towards a renewal tonight, and this is Wayne Platt, I'm just speaking for myself, how I feel. Um, I, I believe that we should have in place a, a hard timeline to have these issues corrected, and, and build that into any, any renewal that will be applied here. Yeah, um. Is that something that you're, you and your team are, are working on then? That's, is that safe to say? Alec?
Yes, um. I mean, what kind of, what's the lead time that you're, you're?
Wayne, if I could, um, this is Sue. Um, I think it, from staff's point of view, that we would ask the applicant, I would, I would request that the board table the application this evening, since this has been an ongoing issue for more than a couple of years, almost now. And, um, in order to make sure that these issues that have been outstanding for so long get addressed and remediated, uh, that, uh, the board table it and ask for a firm timeline on the, uh, from the applicant to be submitted that addresses the work that needs to get done and identifies the time, so we can establish thresholds, and then that timeline could come back to the planning board, uh, next month.
Okay. Alec, that, this is Wayne Platt. Alec, that seems like a reasonable request. If this is something that you folks can work on and have, have a plan in place for us to review at next month's meeting?
Yeah, yeah, and I actually feel more comfortable, uh, speaking with Speedway again, getting that firm timeline, as opposed to having to agree to something this evening.
Yeah, okay. How does the rest of the board feel with tabling at this time? We're all thumbs up on that and allowing them to come back?
Absolutely.
Matt, you're good? Okay, Robert, good?
Good.
MJ?
I'm good.
Hey. All right, um, it seems to be the consensus, and, uh, we look forward to seeing you back here next month, Alec, all right?
All right, great, thank you, have a good evening.
Um, I would just ask the board to require that a timeline be submitted of the applicant in two weeks from today's date, so that we can review it at staff level and prepare it for the board's consideration next month in advance of the meeting.
And Alec, you can make that happen, right?
Yes, I will send an update to Speedway right when I get off the call.
Great. All right, um, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we table item number eight, uh, and have the applicant provide a timeline for resolving these issues within two weeks, to provide that to staff, and they will appear at next month's meeting to discuss that, that timeline. Uh, that, that was a motion. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second.
Second by, is that Robert?
Whoever. Go ahead.
All in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Joe Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Motion approved. Alec, we'll see you next month, pal.
Thank you, see you in November.
Take care. All right, moving on to item number nine. Is thirty-eight Mac Street. It's a special permit to establish a cafe. Section block and lot is fifty-six point thirty-five dash one dash three. Secret determination, zone RT, Ward nine. Christine Simonas is the applicant. Jeffrey Simonas, the owner. Uh, I hope I pronounced those names correctly.
Wayne, this is Sue. Uh, there is a, Tanya Garment, um, has requested to speak at the hearing on this issue.
Hey, hi, Tanya.
Tanya, if you can unmute yourself and speak.
Hi, Tanya. Do we know what caller number she is?
I do not. Caller seventeen, just unmuted, but I cannot hear them. Tanya?
Tanya, are you there? All right. Um. We do have. If, if she comes online a little bit, we'll, we'll go back to her then, Sue?
Yes.
Okay. Uh. Applicants, are you there, Christine and Jeffrey, are you there?
We're here.
Hi, how are you?
We're great, how are you?
Good.
Wayne, Wayne, can I just interrupt there? I, just to let you know, too, there were two other comments that came in on this, uh, that are on the website.
Um, okay.
Just to mention that.
One is, uh, Mr. Bruehl, right? And the other is, uh, one from Svetlana. That's the. Svetlana, that's all I got in here, Svetlana. Okay. Are those the ones you have, Kyle?
Yes.
Okay. Um. Okay, Christine, go ahead. Don't you tell us a little bit about what you want to do there?
Um, hi, everyone, thank you for, um, including us in your consideration. We would like to open a plant-based cafe daytime, um, from approximately six thirty AM till, um, six thirty PM. Um, the menu will, uh, harness, uh, some of the Dutch heritage, um, from Kingston. Um, there'll be plant-based options, and, um, we take the mushroom as our centric, um, ingredient as a protein replacement, and we look forward to serving the community, really.
Okay. And this, this, uh, will be, the, the shop is right next to the parking lot for the church there, right on the, on the corner of Wertz and Mackandy?
Correct. Yeah.
Um, and I see you're going to have two part-time people employed? Is that, that's, that's true?
Correct.
Um. And what about some changes to the building? What are you looking to do with that?
Um, we're not looking to change the building in any, uh, shape or form from the outside. Uh, we look to build a miniature kitchen inside, um, the current space, and the plans have been, uh, submitted and also shared with the health and, uh, the folks.
And I was asking because, about the changes to the building. I see in my notes here, there's a phase two proposed for the spring, where you're planning some awnings and some signage outside and seating.
Wayne, this is Sue. Tanya? I think it's unmuted now. Mowers, I can't tell. Tanya, we want to.
No, there's a lot of noise, I can't hear.
I, I have to mute them.
Can you mute caller sixteen? There we go, okay.
Yeah, that was talking.
Okay. Tanya, are you there now?
Tanya, if you can unmute yourself, please?
Sue, what number is Tanya?
I, I do not know.
Well, look, keep sixteen muted, but you just muted ten and five and twelve. That might be her.
I muted pretty much everybody, um.
Well, you gotta start on mute and find her, other than sixteen.
Tanya? 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 Tanya?
Can you hear me? Hi, now I'm unmuted, I heard unmuted, okay. Hi. So, I'm really happy about this cafe. Hi, my name, Tanya Garment, one or two words. Yeah, I'm really happy this cafe is going to be opening. Though the cafe may be somewhat of a destination, rather than a primary neighborhood amenity, such as a little grocery would be. I think the many close by current neighbors will enjoy visiting and congregating in their garden. Also, there's plenty of always open on-street parking available at Wertz and Mackandy, along the sides of the two parking lots there at that intersection. And more cars in the street spaces would help calm the traffic there and offer a buffer from the street for pedestrians. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you, Tanya.
All right, Christine, you back?
Thank you, um.
All right, um, so, while we were going through some, uh, audio issues there, um, I was saying that, I'm reading in my notes here, there's a phase two proposed for the spring, where you're going to add some, you're proposed to add some awnings and, uh, signage with some seating outside as well?
Uh, correct, um, that is right. We hope to add some curb appeal with a, uh, red and white, uh, awning to the front, and in the, we have a, um, already paved area that we hope to open for, um, outdoor, uh, consumption for coffee, tea, cupcakes, or otherwise. And we have a pochi ball lane, in case anyone cares, but it's, um,
Right.
A bowling lane.
Okay. Um, Sue, this is Wayne. Any of these phases here, are they going to trigger having them come back to planning board, or any other board?
Well, they're, we're only looking at phase one and two at this present time.
Okay. And Christine, um, I'm looking here at parking. Uh, am, am I to understand you have an agreement with the church for parking?
Correct. We were, um, kindly approved by the Lutheran Church to, uh, use the fronts of their parking lot boarding on County and Wertz, to use that week, with the exception on Sunday mornings and special events.
Okay. And Sue, how many spots do they need for this?
I believe two spaces.
Okay. Um, Christine, we're gonna need, and, and maybe you've already provided this, but you're gonna need to provide, uh, written documentation with that agreement with the church so we can have it for our files?
No problem. I have that for you and I shall deliver that.
Okay, and, and Sue is probably gonna need, be, need to be specific about at least two spaces, right? Is that, is that right?
Correct.
No problem. I will make that detail.
And we can make that, uh, part of the conditions of the approval too, so. Um, does anybody have any questions for Christine? Okay. Uh, Sue, have I missed anything on, on staff notes here?
Uh, no.
I missed what, trash, trash pickup? Is that gonna be done by the city, Christine?
Uh, correct.
Okay. All right, um. All right, no questions. Uh. Everybody good with a one-year term for the initial startup on this? Good? Okay. And Christine, this is something that we usually do with special permits. Um. First time through, you're, you're near, and if are maintained and are operating well, then we can move to a, a longer term upon your next renewal, okay?
No problem.
So, under seeker, this is a type-two action, uh, very popular tonight. No further review of the board is required. Um. And Sue, can you, uh, the board.
Okay, so the petition should also have the following board policies tied to it. Power of Policy four, eight, six, seven, seven A, ten, eleven, thirteen, nineteen, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six.
Okay. And, and Christine, that insurer is, or because the awnings are, and the signage are gonna be over the cities right of way, you need to have proof of insurance for that?
Um, yeah, that's, um, that was, that's clear and we, we will.
Yeah, okay.
And Wayne, they'll, they'll provide them with the information that they need for that.
Okay. Did you hear that, Christine?
Yes, I did, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue.
Can we mute number nineteen?
Done.
Thank you. All right, so with all the board policies that Sue has just illustrated. Um, I'm going to make that a motion that we approve, item number nine, and have it for a period of one year. Uh, that is a motion. Do I have a second?
Wayne, with the statement from the church for the parking.
Sorry. And also the, uh, the, the agreement on the parking, uh, with the church. We need that to have in writing as well, submitted to staff. Thank you, Sue, for that one. Uh, that. Do I have a second? So we buy Robert. Robert, okay. Uh, all in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Uh, Chuck Palacko?
Is a yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Gillis?
Yes.
Hey, it is approved. Christine, thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you. We're very grateful.
Hey, have a good night.
You too.
Bye-bye. All right, um, item number ten. Uh, let's see here. Is fifty-two dash sixty-eight Wertz Street subdivision of the lands of Crossfield Management LLC. Section block and lot is fifty-six point forty-three dash four dash one. Seeker determination, zone RT, Ronda Historic District, Heritage Area, Coastal Consistency. Ward eight, Crossfield Management LLC is the applicant owner. Um, I do have, Kyla, how many written comments do we have on this one?
One.
Yeah, one.
One posted on the website, Wayne, but you also have three people that would like to speak on this.
Absolutely. Um, let's hear those folks. Sue, if you want to introduce them.
Uh, Tanya, I'll start with you.
Thanks, hi. Okay, so, um, hi. Um, a couple months ago, you approved a lot line deletion for the lands of Robert Iannucci on Abiel Street. Without any discussion of it, no narration or anything. That can have an impact, just like this one could have an impact, which is the opposite. It's, um, a subdivision. In the case of, of, uh, Beal Street, you could, you're now gonna have parking as a primary use on, on those lots allowed because it's been combined into one. So, one whole lot, one formerly, uh, single, separate lot could now be a parking lot. Um, there are similar things to think about when you subdivide. The way the zoning code will work will be different in this case. Um, than it would have been if you do this, if it was one single lot. We have a new comprehensive plan from two thousand and sixteen. And the city has been dragging its feet to do a proper, full-city, um, new code for our new comprehensive plan. Our current zoning and the way that it works, much, um, very much, um. Is for the goals of the nineteen sixty-one comprehensive plan. There's been some fixes along the line to make it a little better. But really, our current zoning code really supports the go, ideals of nineteen sixty-three. Um, so. Please do not make any more changes for the sake of somebody being able to sell a piece of land. Any changes, any zoning changes, and also any lot changes until we have a proper, um, code. The Common Council has recently started speaking about doing that, doing the code. They had a member of the, um, zoning task force. The zoning task force of the RFP has found a consultant who they presented to the Common Council right before the state of emergency was declared. The Common Council is showing signs of moving forward with the zoning code rewrite soon. Please hold off on that until you make any more changes. It's very important that we have a proper zoning code in this time when we have displacement happening, more coming. And we have bidding wars on real estate. We shouldn't have to help developers sell their property more easily. Thanks very much.
Okay, the next caller is Matthew Gioia, Gioi. From ten Wertz Street. Matthew, you can unmute yourself, please, and speak.
Whoa, in Hudson? Well, yeah, it was a Hudson. And well, well, Apple picking wasn't much to write home about. I, I joked, it's more, it was more like. Oh, because everyone's going, yeah. No, no, no.
Matthew? 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 Matthew?
Oh, hello? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Um, hello, I'm Matthew. I, I think you said, um, I was at ten Wertz Street. I'm actually at sixty-three Wertz Street. I'm directly across the street from the property.
Okay.
Um, in question. Yeah, I, I really just wanted to second, um, a, a lot of what Tanya said. Um, my name, my neighbor Tanya has become very knowledgeable about, uh, zoning codes and about, uh, our zoning code. Um, and I agree with her that to move ahead on this subdivision, um, with our outdated, uh, in, inadequate zoning code. Would be irresponsible at this time, and I would likewise urge the board to, um, to hold off until we have, uh, a zoning code. Um, which we forward with in a responsible fashion. Um, and that's my comment. Um, I, I know that, um. Uh, my spouse also wrote a letter and, and sent it in and she couldn't attend the, uh, the meeting, um, but. Um, I'm not sure if you'll be able to read her letter as well.
Is that, is that Ann?
Anna, that's correct, sorry.
That, that letter will be available for view, uh, right now, as a matter of fact, on the city's website. Okay?
Okay, very good.
That has not been posted yet, Wayne.
Sorry, it will be, I'm s-
Wayne, you can read her letter into the record if you would like.
Okay.
I'm gonna go back onto mute, but thank you for the time.
Okay.
All right.
Hello?
Hello?
Wayne, do you have her letter?
I have it right here. Hello, I am a Wertz Street resident writing in concern over the proposed subdivision and development of the historic Cornell Street property. At fifty-two dash sixty-eight Wertz Street. That is owned by Mike Piazza. I live directly across from this parcel of land and observe it daily. It serves as a wildlife refuge for many animals. It is apparent that the previous owner, Paul Joffe, did not take any care of it. Allowing the forest understory to get out of hand with many invasive species that blocked the view we once had of the Hudson River when we first purchased our house. This is a way to preserve the historic integrity, natural native plant species, and forest habitat. Without clear-cutting the land and perhaps even build housing, yet neither owner seems to be interested in doing so. It is quite obvious that the former owner bought the land with zero interest in its ecological health, community presence, or historic integrity. But with the sole purpose of capitalistic monetary gain, which is now mirrored by its present owner, Mike Piazza. As anyone who lives adjacent, directly across the street. Uh, excuse me, as someone who lives adjacent, which is directly across the street. I am deeply concerned about the birds, fawns, and other animals that use this as part of a dwindling wildlife corridor. To connect them to safer and wilder locations. There are also abundant native plants on the property that can serve as food and medicine for foragers, people, and animals. And it would be a disservice to the land to dishonorably destroy them. Examples of native and non-native plants present include red raspberry, sumac, wild grape, edible mushroom, knotweed, milkweed, and I'm sure there are more. I also worry about the environmental impact of developing this parcel into three lots. Including and primarily the loss of green space in the roundout neighborhood. Trees are deeply important when it comes to air quality. They moderate the temperature by providing shade and protecting the topsoil, which, if disturbed, creates greater vulnerability to increased carbon emissions. And hotter, dustier weather. The more trees and green space we lose, the hotter and poorer air quality we will experience as a city. On top of this, I'd like to know if an environmental impact study has been done. And I'm very concerned about the noise and dust and pollution that would be caused by allowing three build sites. Instead of perhaps one, which would be much more reasonable in the increased pollution and use res- of resources that would occur over time. Uh, excuse me, from, have three new residents there as opposed to one. Our family is very sensitive to sound and would be very concerned about the duration and noise involved with such project. I have launched a small, nature-based neighborhood homeschool program from, from my home. Massive construction directly across the street would cause us many problems. We use our home and backyard for learning almost daily. It is already very noisy on our intersection with sirens, stop sign, and motorcycles passing through all day long. I can't imagine the noise levels that three build sites and three new homes would cause. Lastly, I have read that Mr. Piazza intends to leave the stone wall in Wertz Street. Is the only historic measure he is taking. Dividing a historic home site of the Cornell family. One of the most famous, famous families in the area connected to Cornell Park and the Cornell Steamboat Building, among many other things that would be a disservice to the community. History and the historic neighborhood in which it is situated. The other two Cornell properties mentioned are commonly oriented places, or, excuse me, community-oriented places. Why not protect this land as well? Why must profit for somebody already so wealthy be one, the only motivating factor? How can we allow developers and opportunists to serve their own greed and accumulation of wealth? Before the health and livelihood of existing habitats and communities. The human and citizen connection to land is something that has long been in need of repair. This entire neighborhood has roots that predate the Cornells and colonial presence in this region. Our entire block was once called the Indian Tennis Courts. Because of the ballgames that Native Americans, the Asofas, used for open land, use the open land for. It is a travesty to develop every undeveloped parcel of land, something we know our indigenous predecessors would never have dared or dreamed to do. Because of the knowledge that we must not only take from the land, but must work to regenerate it in order to opti- optimally interact. With our landscape and experience long-term, robust health of all species involved. Perhaps in honor of Indigenous Peoples' Day, we could perhaps consider slowing the attack on land and property in Kingston and beyond. Establish honorable and responsible zoning codes, taking one small step, not to repair the damage done by colonizers, because it is too late for that. But to not insult the memory of the mistakes that have been made by continuing to make them. I urge the city of Kingston to repair their zoning laws immediately. This is not the time to let things slip by. We are responsible for our relationship to the land. If we don't protect it, no one else will, and soon we will have only pavement and lawns, and our children will not be able to identify more than a few species. Because of the reduction of biodiversity and exposure to forested habitat- habitats. And the ecosystems which inhabit them. With dedication and, uh, Gioi, Anna Gioi.
Okay, I have one other caller that wanted to speak. Peter Wetslar. Peter, if you can unmute yourself, please. Peter? Peter? Peter?
I'm here. I'm here. All right, can you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. All right, well, I would, uh, definitely echo, I'm also a neighbor. Uh, I live in the church on Wertz Street. The, that was, uh, actually, um, came into existence through Thomas Cornell, who. So the property that we're talking about was where Thomas Cornell's mansion was and, and, um, imagine most of you all have seen Lost Rondout. And you, you've seen pictures of what, what it used to be, and, uh, it is a, you know, a vital part of our neighborhood. It's, Cornell Park is a vital part of our neighborhood. And, uh, we actually were part of a group that was trying to purchase the land before Mike Piazza. To make it something that would serve the park and extend the park. We're, we're, we're very much, uh, in favor of, of keeping. You know, as our, our parks, uh, healthy and this would have been great. Well, we missed out on that, so. this would have been great. Well, we missed out on that. So, bad enough that, um, you'd want to turn into one home, but to subdivide into three homes is, uh, just kind of, it makes us really, really sad.
Cornell.
But any event, uh, what I did want to encourage you to think about is the fact that our community and our world are ongoing and precedent upheaval during this time. And we need to step back and think about what's best for the citizens and the neighborhoods, rather than let developers and speculators price us out of our homes, which are already happening. I mean, this is worrying the time of COVID right now. There's some very scary things going on. Kingston did revise its comprehensive plan zoning and, but it hasn't updated the form-based code to reflect the plan. This should be a priority so that we prevent a repeat of the destruction of the Rondout that the city did under urban renewal over half a year, half a century ago. So, we urge you to oppose a moratorium on new development. We agree with the argument that we need more housing stock, but not without looking at the displacement of our community members that has happened under, that happened before under urban renewal. So, um, you know, if the town of Lloyd, which is more conservative, has placed a moratorium on development, why can't we? This is something, you know, we treasure, and we value you as our board to, to have our backs as, as for the community and not just be, um, uh, giving a, a blank slate, empty, blank check to developers. So, that's, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Peter. Dan, Dan Garten, something you want to say?
Uh, specifically why?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you, I thought I saw something up there. I'm sorry.
Dan, do you want to talk about the timeframe? There are no more callers. That was the last caller I have.
I just wanted to note for the record that, uh, there are time limits that are set forth under state law for determining a subdivision application, and contrary to what was requested by the numerous speakers, you can't merely defer making a decision on a duly filed application based upon the fact that there is potentially a revision of the zoning code that may or may not go forward. You have to decide on the application that's in front of you based on the merits of the application.
Thank you, Dan. Um, this is Wayne Platt. So, Sue, the, uh, the three lots that are proposed here all meet with the current zoning requirements for that particular area?
Yes, they do.
And, um, let me see here. On all three building lots, Sue, would, um, are you in favor of, of having them show what a build, where the buildable areas are?
Yes, that's a standard requirement that we have been asking all applicants to put onto any subdivision application that comes before the planning board, just to identify the actual area within the boundary of the newly established lots that could be constructed upon.
Okay. So, so currently, we are just looking at, again, just to reiterate, the three building lots, no buildings being proposed, and we're just acting upon a subdivision now, right? That's it? Or a lot of revision?
That's correct. That's correct. And as you see in your notes, um, because this is in the RT district, it is a little, um, there's a little bit more involved in any new construction for any home on any of these lots, uh, that would have to go before the Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission, the Heritage Area Commission, and the Planning Board, which is not a, a normal requirement in most other zoning districts. But in the RT, it is specifically requested and required.
Okay. So, with any buildings that are proposed here, um, it would have to, like you just said, have to pass through a couple more filters where folks would be able to weigh in and, and more public comment would be, would be, um, available to be made at those, at those particular boards, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, anybody on the board have any other questions or statements to make?
Wayne?
Wait. Robert. I do too, Wayne, but go ahead, Robert.
I was just wondering, did this, uh, Sue, did this plan go by, um, uh, engineering at all to make sure that the, uh, based on the topography and also the, um, the steepness of Spring Street, that this right-of-way will work and that utilities and things can service these three lots?
We have not referred this application to engineering, no. Um, but the right-of-way is off of Spring Street, as you can see, that will serve all three lots if necessary. Um, no access on Work Street is something they've tried to maintain to continue that prominence of the wall that exists there. But no, I did not refer it to engineering.
Do you think maybe before the board looks at this again, we should, uh, see if they have any comment based on utilities going out the right-of-way and sightlines on Spring Street that, you know, see what they have to say, or whether they agree with it?
We could, absolutely. I could do that. Yeah.
Sue, can I just ask, is anyone, is any of the applicants on the line? I don't see anyone.
No, I did not see anybody.
Okay, just for the record, I don't, I'm not sure they're here.
Wayne, this is Mary Jo. Um, I, I agree with Robert. That was going to be one of my comments. Uh, I'm a little concerned that there's not more information about the topography and how building and construction would affect that park and, um, the, the view to the Hudson for the surrounding neighbors. Um, I'd like to know a little bit more information about, uh, the sewers there and how they would be able to be hooked up to those, to any new construction that would be there, and the traffic flow. Um, you know, off-street parking, you know, parking on the streets there is, um, you know, on that large hill is, you know, not, not that great at best there. So, I would definitely like a little bit more information before I would agree that a subdivision should be agreed to here. That's, that's my opinion.
Okay.
All right. Um, this is Wayne. Um, do we want to have all of that information attached to this subdivision now, or do we, do we want to have those issues addressed when there's an actual, uh, building being proposed for each of these lots? Is, uh, how does, how does the board feel about that? Is, Sue, is this something that we, that is not out of, out of the question to do right now as part of this, or do we wait?
Okay, looking at the, the proposed utility connections, um, and looking at the terrain issues is not out of the question, no.
Okay, okay.
And Wayne, wait, Dave Gartenstein, you certainly have time to make that request and address this at the November meeting. Um, you don't have much more time than that, though. So, um, you know, you can request the information, and then pretty much in November, you're gonna have to vote yea or nay depending on what information comes back. But you certainly have another option.
Okay.
Wayne, and I, I can appreciate that there's a timeline on this, but this is very significant to me. Um, this, this will be a major change here, and it does affect, um, one of our, you know, our more cherished parks and areas. And I, I really, I don't feel comfortable rushing this. Um, so, so I, I don't feel comfortable agreeing to this today. That's just my opinion.
Wayne, uh, this is Chuck. I concur with Mary Jo.
Okay. Now, this is, Mary Jo, you're not identifying this as a park, right? Is that?
No, no. It's, it's adjacent to the park. I know it's not the park.
Okay, okay. All right. So, um, what do we want to attach then? Sue, the, the, the items that the folks just mentioned on here are board members. What, what are we gonna include on, on the approval here?
Well, if I heard correctly, the first one item would be to refer the, uh, proposed subdivision to the city engineer for their opinion on both the topography and the orientation of any, uh, connections to water and sewer services, um, as well as the access on Spring Street and the line of sites, um, given the, the slope of Spring Street.
I think you're also looking at proposed house locations, right?
Right. Buildable area would have to be defined on the, uh, map. I mean, we just typically ask for buildable area, not any proposed location of a house, but, uh, ask them to define the buildable area, which essentially is just placing the setbacks on the map, um, and showing where, you know, where the area within they can construct.
Also, Sue?
Yes.
Um, I know there's been discussions about not, um, affecting the wall on, on Work Street, uh, but there's only one set of stairs that would enter Lot One. My question is, how do they propose to access the sidewalk for Lot Two?
Uh, I don't know. I mean, I believe that would probably come with any exact building plans. Right now, there is no plans that I am aware of for construction on any of these parcels. Um, I believe it's the intent, and we can confirm this, to sell the parcels off independently, and any new purchaser would do the construction. So, at that time, those, uh, that construction would be brought for the review of the Planning Board, Landmarks, and Heritage Area Commissions.
Okay.
Uh, just a note, too, that I know Dan mentioned the sixty-two days, um, as the time limit. Um, so just beware that if no action is taken within the sixty-two days, the subdivision would be deemed approved by default.
Okay. All right. So, we can, this is Wayne again. We can have, it seems like the board wants to refer these matters to the engineer for, for the items you just listed. They can, the applicant can come back to the meeting next month, and, and hopefully Mr. Piazza will be here. Um, and they, they can address those at that time, Sue, and we can maybe have a decision then?
Yes. We'll, we'll contact the applicant and advise them that it is critical that they be present at the next meeting.
Okay.
Excuse me, Dave Gartenstein again. Sue, can we just confirm when the application was received?
Um, Kyla, can you look that up?
That this was not sitting for any reason, and that the timeframe is still viable?
Yeah, I, I don't believe, I mean, it has not been sitting, to my knowledge. It was...
We also have an applicant that hasn't come to the meeting here either, so... Hard to act on something without a representative.
Correct. And, and if we, if we really need to vote, uh, at this point to prevent that, then at this particular time, until we have more information, I would, no.
I would say this, again, I would say that the sixty-two days has not, is not close yet.
It's, it came in on the twenty-ninth of September.
Then we are fine.
Okay. And Sue, this is Wayne. Um, we, I mean, we're, we're gonna be tabling this, it looks like, and we can deal with seeker at, at that next meeting then?
Yes. Yes, you would not want to deal with it now.
Um, anybody else have any questions or comments for a move? Okay. All right. Uh, so at this time, I will make a motion that we table item number ten and refer the matter to the city engineer with respect to topography, sewer connections, um, access onto Spring Street, uh, which also includes, uh, site distance concerns. Is there anything else on there that I'd missed?
Yeah, and how, how any construction would affect the, the park, like drainage and that type of thing.
I think you're referring to stormwater.
Stormwater, yes.
All right, stormwater management during construction?
If I can just say one thing there. I mean, I will ask the engineer, but I believe his response is going to be that that is impossible for him to provide an opinion until there is an actual, to, until there is actual construction proposed, because stormwater collection would be altered at that time, and right now, there are no plans for new construction.
Maybe we can get him to, to make that into a, a form of a statement on his letter back to us, Sue, yeah?
Yes.
And also, um, we're gonna need to show on these three, three lots, the buildable areas as well. Okay?
Correct.
So, that is a motion. This Wayne Platt, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mary Jo Wiltshire. All in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palacko?
Is a yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Pat Gillis?
Yes.
That is adopted. Okay. Thank you, folks. Um, moving on to item number eleven?
Yes.
All right. That is two seventy-two Wall Street, a special permit to install a wireless telecommunications site and associated site improvements. Section blocking lot is forty-eight point three hundred thirty-one dash six dash seven, secret determination, zone C two, stockade historic district, heritage area, Ward two, Aerosmith Incorporated, doing business as Aerosmith Development, uh, reformed Dutch church as the owner. The Aerosmith Incorporated is the applicant, right? Yes. Um, we're still under public hearing, so anybody was wishing to speak on this one, Sue?
No, there is nobody. Uh, the applicant is present as well.
Hello there.
George, do you want to introduce yourself? George, we can't hear you.
Is that George Santor?
Yeah. He's showing as unmuted.
George, are you there?
George, we can't hear you. Are you using an audio connection as well, a call connection?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
There we go.
Okay.
Hi there.
Yes, the, uh, earbuds were, yeah, the earbuds are working. Um, so my name is George Santor, uh, here for, on behalf of AT&amp;T, so Aerosmith Development, uh, represents AT&amp;T. And, um, do you want to go over the project a little bit?
Please.
Yes, please.
Sure. So, we're doing, what we're doing here is we're installing a new cell site for AT&amp;T inside of the old Dutch church's steeple. Um, so you're gonna, you know, typically you have a cell tower or something like this, but, uh, in this case, it's a pretty unique install where we install the antennas inside of the steeple. And, uh, there's a perfect, uh, drawing of it. Uh, so the antennas are inside of the steeple, and the, there's some equipment in the church's basement to operate the whole facility. And then the only thing exterior to the, uh, to steeple or the building is a natural gas generator, which is located, um, outside in the church's yard. So, there's eight antennas. Um, everything's enclosed within that steeple. Uh, you can't, it's not visible from outside. Um, and the only thing that is visible is the natural gas generator, uh, which is, uh, you can see, you can see it somewhat from the street. Uh, we've included in the application photo simulations. Uh, I think they turned out even better than I thought it was gonna be. So, uh, the generator is, um, uh, hidden behind the landscaping. Uh, so it's, while it is, it's, it's quite difficult to see it from the, uh, from the road. So, uh, that's pretty much the extent of the project. Um, and, uh, that's it. Let me know if you got any questions.
Okay. Um, I have a question, George. Um, just with the landscaping, one comment... one comment um would be to kind of close off the corner with additional landscaping. Um, it's along both sides, but that corner that is actually looking out to the street, um both fair and main is left open. So just kind of continuing that landscaping around that corner um would be one request.
Right where, like, you mean like right where uh the the mouse is right now?
Yes, yeah. And then, uh we had a question, uh the cable that you're showing on the elevation drawing, that cable is outside of the steeple structure itself, correct?
No, all cabling, uh the cables go up the center, uh so the, it, the steeple has like, it's this large uh open area in the middle, right up through the middle of it, so everything will go up through there. Uh, that is, you can just see it that way, because it's. Right.
On the drawing, that's showing on the outs, so that's not going to be on the outside, that's going to be on the interior.
Correct. Let me look at the uh, the drawings quick here, so I know exactly what you're referencing. Um, but yeah, so everything, if it's, I believe it's just shown that way on the drawings, uh let's see. Yes, so it's just, it's it's shown that way for clarity in the drawings, uh but those are, those, that wire is not gonna be strapped to the outside.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
This is Wayne Platt. The application, have you gone before the Landmarks Commission and Heritage Area already?
No, they would be next.
Okay.
They have submissions and they're going to be before uh the landmarks on November fifth, and heritage, they'll be on next uh week, I believe, yeah. So they're they're scheduled to be on those. They can be conditional, if you'd like.
Anybody from the board have any questions, this board?
What, Wayne?
Yeah.
Just a quick question, only because the.
This is Robert Jacobson talking.
Robert, you're muted.
Because it's kind of an obvious question, but because the graveyard's so old, did the church verify through historical records that this location, the generator, is not part of the graveyard?
Correct, yes. So those um, those gravestones that are there are representational, as in, they are, there isn't like a directly uh a body that's directly right there. Um, so this, your gravestones there um represent um people that have been buried underneath the the actual building of the church, or in a different uh different graveyard, in a different cemetery that the church owns. Um, and they confirmed that they're able to move the gravestones, and that's, I think there are some plans to do that to begin with.
So will, that they'll be relocated on site, George? This is Sue.
That's up to the church, um so perhaps relocate on the site, perhaps relocate it to a different now cemetery that they own, uh that's up to them.
Any other questions?
Just one more from me. Um, I did, I forgot um to ask, there's a lease, now you're leasing this um facility. Uh, what is the term of the lease?
It's um broken into five-year length terms. And uh it would, it would last a few decades.
Okay. Okay.
Sue, this is Wayne. What kind of a initial term would you um like to see here?
Well, that's, that's why I was asking about the the term of the lease. Um, it wouldn't go beyond the five years. Um, I think that that would be reasonable with the other conditions that have been set.
Is five years good with the rest of the board?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Um.
Wayne?
Yeah.
Just one, one thing I would ask with Robert Jacobson is uh, as part of the application, uh the location of the generator is very close to other businesses, um and uh various buildings. I know that generators are usually set once a week or once a month to do like a test cycle. I would just ask that the applicant um maybe put that test cycle, uh maybe like on a Saturday morning or something, when the businesses aren't open and and competing with noise. Just just off hours.
George, is that something you can take care of?
Uh, yeah, I think that's to be, you're you're talking, doing it on.
Um, you just have, you have a lot of offices, like nine-five there, so I I just, I wouldn't like, I know this is gonna be a sizable generator, so um just for noise factor, if they can do it like on a Saturday morning or weekend or something, we're just not disruptive to, you know, evening and and normal business operations that are in the neighborhood.
That's fine. That's very fine.
That's something that needs to be built into the the conditions, or is it something that could just be taken care of on its own?
We can just on its own, it's just a, just a, a, your request that, you know, when they set it up, that it's, you know.
Anything else? Okay. Um, under seeker, this is our type-two action, so no further review of the board is required. And at this time, I will make a motion that we approve item number eleven for a period of five years. Uh, we need to have additional landscaping added to the uh generator area. Um, Sue, is there anything else that is, that, board policy, six, obviously?
And the um positive reviews by the Heritage Area Commission and the Historic Landmark Preservation Commission.
Sounds good. Uh, that is a motion. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Chuck, yes.
Hi, Mary Jo. Uh, all in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Chuck Palaco?
Is a yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Pat Gillis?
Yes.
Okay. That was passed. George, thank you for showing tonight.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Okay. All right. Um, item number twelve. Six oh nine Broadway, special permit renewal to, uh, excuse me, to renovate an existing building with ground floor commercial and eight residential units above. Uh, section block and lot is fifty-six point one hundred nine dash three dash seventeen. Seeker determination, zone C two, mixed-use overlay district, Broadway overlay district, ward four, JMS six oh nine Broadway is the applicant owner. Uh. Is the applicant here?
Yes, I'm here. Stefan is here.
And Scott, I believe is also here. Scott Patton.
Yeah, all right. Hi, Scott. Hi, Stefan.
Hello.
All right, so this is the building directly next to the old Kings in parking lot, correct?
Yes.
Um, it's still, it's still under construction, correct?
Yes, for anyone that's uh been driving up and down Broadway, um, I'm sure you'll be delighted to see that the blue tarp is coming down and the facade is uh under construction now.
Um, so, uh, we're looking at a term here, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna open the board, the the rest of the board the questions too. But uh, I'm in favor of continuing it for one, for one more year to allow construction and renovations to continue. Uh, how does the rest of the board feel about that? Good?
Scott has a question.
Wayne, if if I could suggest eighteen months to allow them to finish construction and lease up and have a permanent C of O in place, I think one year might bring them back right around that, the cusp of that.
Okay. Um, applicant has made his request for eighteen months. Uh, I'm okay with that too. Uh, everybody else okay with that?
Others, Chuck, I'm good with that.
Okay. Um, anything else uh from the board on this? Every, there's nothing, nothing else has changed, right, Scott?
That's correct.
Okay. Um. All right, so um, under seeker, this is a type-two action. No further review of the board is required at this time. Uh, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we approve item number twelve for a period of eighteen months with all original conditions carried forward. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
By Charles Palaco. All in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Robert? Yeah?
Yeah.
Mary Jo?
Yes.
Gillis?
Yes.
Motion is adopted. All right, Stefan, Scott, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Have a great evening. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
All right, moving into old business. Item number thirteen is seven oh two Broadway, special permit renewal for six residential units use in the C two slash mixed-use overlay district. Section block and lot is fifty-six point twenty-five dash one dash nine point one hundred. Seeker determination, zone C two, mixed-use overlay district, heritage area, ward two. Mohamed Al Shari is the applicant, Morning Tree Corp is the owner. Uh. Is Mr. Al Shari here?
I do not see him. Uh, I do not know if he's a caller. Uh, Mr. Al Shari, are you with the, are you on as a caller? If you can, would you unmute yourself? I can go through the callers and unmute them one by one, Wayne. Hold on.
Go ahead.
Mr. Al Shari, are you there? Mr. Al Shari, are you there? Mr. Al Shari, are you there? Are you there? Mr. Al Shari, are you there? Mr. Al Shari? Are you there? Mr. Al Shari?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to unmute yourself then?
No, thank you.
Mr. Al Shari? Mr. Al Shari? That's it. I went through all the callers that are currently on.
All right. Um. Well. Let's see here. I think we should have the applicant here for this particular item. Do you agree? The rest of the board agree?
Uh, this is his second month not showing up, so maybe we should deny it for the moment and then make him come back.
Well, I mean, if we deny it. Robert, what was that?
What communication has Steph had with the applicant?
Nothing since the original application came in. We, we don't have the best email relationship with Mohammed, so maybe um we'll give him a call and see. He might have trouble with the situation that we're in right now with the video conferencing. So we can touch base with him. I I think uh if we deny, if you deny the application, he'll have to resubmit with a complete new fee. Um, I don't know if you want to take that step yet.
Yeah.
I would say, we give him one more month and Steph or one of the board members, we try and reach out to him at the store.
He no longer operates the store. Um.
He lives above it, right?
Correct.
Right.
This is Wayne Platt. Mary Jo, we we may be revisiting that denial aspect of it, because there's still not any work that has been done in that rear building. So.
Okay.
We may be discussing that as well.
Well, I, I don't want to cause him any additional hardship, but. Sorry.
I know, I understand. I, I mean, it's been, it's been quite a, quite a bit of time that we've been, we've been discussing that rear building with no action taken, so I I completely hear you. Um, but I'm inclined to go with Robert's suggestion that give him one. Give him one more month. And uh, we'll go there. Is that, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, maybe Sue can send like a certified mail return receipt uh within the next few days from the contact the office, and if that goes unnoticed by next month, then at least we tried.
Agreed, and because he knows his, his permit's up for renewal, so it would, he should be contacting Sue, not the other way around.
But at least if we make the attempt, then when we make the denial, we've done as much.
Okay.
All right. All right, so, uh, this is Wayne Platt. Uh, at this time, I will make a motion to table item number thirteen. Do I have a second?
Second, Robert Jacobson.
Jacobson, all in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Is a yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Pat Gillis?
Yes.
And is adopted. All right. Uh, moving on, item number fourteen is twenty-one O'Neal Street, special permit to establish a drinking establishment in an existing building. Section block and lot is fifty-six point twenty-five dash two dash fifteen. Seeker determination, zone C three, ward four. Eric Sterniolo is the applicant owner. Eric, are you here?
I'm here.
Eric is here. Marcos is here as well from the architecture firm.
Okay. Hi, Marcos.
I'm there.
All right. Uh. So, let's see here. We have, how many, we have some letters for the written comment here, too?
There was one comment um combined with one from thirty-eight Mac and T, just recognizing the type of use and the benefit, and basically in favor of the use.
Okay. Okay. Um, so, I think the focus of of our discussion tonight, uh, we've talked about everything else uh last month, is the parking, I believe. And Eric and Marcos, you folks went to ZBA, the zoning board of appeals, correct?
Correct.
That's right.
And Sue, it appears that the ZBA has kicked it back. They didn't make a decision on it. They wanted us to to weigh in on the parking waiver. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Um. You know, I I I know last month, I, I, this is Wayne Platt, last month I had, I had mentioned the fact that there was that parking lot next to the Sea Deli on Broadway. Um, it does fall within the four hundred feet of this property. However, this use for twenty-one O'Neal Street is requiring thirty-three spots. So, you know, as much as I, as I would like to include that lot on Broadway um as part of the uh. um, as part of the, uh, approval here, um, I do have to concede that thirty-three spots, it's a stretch to go to that lot, so, um. I'm inclined to, uh, as, as much as I want to see this, this operation get up and running, uh, it, it's coming down to the parking issue, and I'm inclined to, to deny the application based on, on, or on, on that particular aspect of it. I think the rest of the operation looks good. I think it would be a good fit for there. Um, but that, I know that other folks on the board, it's been a, a sticking point for them too. And, um, you know, I, I've changed my mind since the last, last meeting. And I'll open it up to the rest of the board to discuss that if they want to, or any other issues that are, that are out there. Mary Jo, I knew you were big.
Uh, yeah, the park, the parking is definitely the sticky issue for me. Um, I support the business itself. Um, but I, I don't agree with the waiver of the parking for this.
Are you sure? Can I help you clear it up?
I spend all my time.
Robert's looking for.
Scrub the.
Robert.
Just the cast iron steel wool, hot water, pat it dry, put it on the stove, turn the stove on, let it dry all day.
So you don't use soap then?
Never use soap on a cast iron.
Can we, can we mute Joshua?
I did.
Hi Wayne. I, I wasn't at, I wasn't a part of the last meeting, so I wasn't fully, you know, uh, up to speed on this. Um, but having reviewed it and, and driven past the site, um, my only concern as a planning board member is we've been in this situation in the past where we haven't wanted to give the parking waiver, but there's been times where we have in order to help a neighborhood out, to have a successful business and start to kind of start with the revitalization. I know that we have the, um, the dairy across the street, um, who's going to be putting some significant money into their property recently through the planning board. Um, and I know that, um, there's been, family Woodstock has their property that they keep up, but there's also been some properties this one included that haven't really had any money put in in a long time. Um, given that it's on the rail trail, there was discussions with respect to, um. Sorry, there were, uh, discussions with respect to, um, uh, possibly having this street be a corridor, so if we have people using the rail trail, they can get out to Broadway to service businesses that are popping up on Broadway, especially with, with the bikes. And I'm just, I'm, I'm a little nervous denying an applicant and a business who wants to move into the neighborhood, fix up a building, and given the size of the building, I think anything that goes in it is going to need some type of parking waiver. I mean, it just, it's such a large space, even if it's used for commercial purposes. Employees, deliveries, I'm just, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit here.
Okay. Wayne, if I could. Wayne, you muted. Okay.
Go ahead.
So, um, I, Robert and for the rest of the board, just to be clear, okay? The business requires thirty-three parking spaces. At this point in time, the way their project is designed, they don't have that, uh, capability to provide the onsite parking that the zoning ordinance requires them to have. So they have two, um, measures, two methods to address it. They can seek a variance from the zoning board of appeals, or they can request a waiver from the planning board. The planning board can only grant the waiver if there is found to be adequate capacity in existing lots, whether they be private or public, within four hundred linear feet. Now, they've thought out private arrangements and have not had any success at that. The only public lot that is within four hundred feet is the Sea Deli lot. That lot only has ten spaces in it to begin with, so right from the beginning, that lot could not provide their total need of thirty-three parking spaces.
So why was this picked back to us from the zoning board? Why didn't they act on the application?
I can address that, but I'm not going to address that in a public session. If you want to speak privately in an attorney-client, um, conversation, I can certainly do that. This is, this is Wayne Platt. Sue, we deny the, the application based on the parking waiver. It's going to go back to ZBA for, for a decision by them. Wait, is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Wayne, just so I, you're clear on what you're saying. Are you saying deny the application or deny the waiver, the application for the waiver?
That's where I'm confused.
By the waiver.
You're, you're looking at deny. Yes, if you deny the, deny a waiver, which they're, they're going to have to go back to the zoning board of appeals, whether you get, grant a waiver using the Sea Deli lot or not. You still have to go back to the ZBA, okay? Because the lot, the Sea Deli lot only has ten parking spaces. And they need thirty-three, so there is not the capacity within that lot to, to address their needs.
I, I understand. Yeah, I understand what Robert was saying, and that was our struggle at the last meeting, is because we really support the business, but I just don't see how we can waive this parking.
And in fairness, when Wayne was discussing it, he was talking about denying, and I thought he was referring to the application, not the parking, so that's where I found him, my ears went up.
Yeah, and that, that's a, that was a, uh, I misspoke there, Robert. I apologize for that.
Wayne, the applicant has his hand up. Eric has his hand up.
Go ahead, Eric.
Hi, thank you. Um, thanks for having us back. Um, it was my understanding that the ZBA sent us back to the planning board not to have our whole parking um, answered by the Sea Deli lot, but to have part of it, to have our number needed, um, reduced. So, for example, um, we are given a waiver to use five spots in the Sea Deli lot. Then that would mean the ZBA only needs to, to approve twenty-eight spots versus thirty-three. I think that's why they sent us to you, knowing we would go back to them. Was never, we know that this lot can't take care of all of the parking for us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
With the Sea Deli lot being so small, it's always busy already, so I don't know how it can accommodate any of the parking from this business.
What are the hours on the business? Are we off hours though?
What was that?
This is Robert. Are we off hours on this? To consider any spots?
The residents use it at night, though.
Wayne Alderman-Tollman has his hand up.
I. Go ahead, Alderman-Tollman.
Hi guys, thank you. This is Don Tollman. Um, I just want to, you know, I think this, I would, I would, uh, encourage the board to, to go, uh, to at least give, uh, the applicant, you know, with some, some spaces out of the Sea Deli and then push it back to the, um, to the, uh, ZBA. Um, you know, I, I think that, it sounds like there's a consensus that people like the business and want to, want to do what they can to help. Eric, you know, my position is that we are, we're all, we're trying to make our, our city and our business districts more walkable. And, um, you know, to have, and also to not rely on parking. Um, in that, you know, people won't be driving, drinking and driving, but instead they'll take, uh, cabs or Uber or Lyft and, you know, the fact that this is on the rail trail and in a central position, spot in our city, it really plays to what we want to accomplish, uh, in the future. And in the future, hopefully, we can look at our parking, at our zoning regulations relative to parking and, and reduce our requirements, um, i- in the future. Uh, you know, I know that you are aware that we're looking at revisiting the entire zoning code and rewriting it, and I think that's on the table. You know, the amount of parking required for each business and each resident, so. You know, with that in mind, those larger, uh, uh, issues in mind, you know, I'd be in favor, I'd suggest, uh, that we give Eric something to bring back to ZBA, so they can consider one more time, um, providing a, uh, a waiver for variance.
And they, can they consider can, having any parking in the back of their building, even if it's just staff or, um, administrative? I mean, I, I don't know if that helps them with the parking issue or not.
But there's some parking in front, isn't there?
I'm sorry?
The, the Robert Jacobson, is there parking in front?
No.
Not in front, but in back of the building. There's a small alleyway that leads back there, which was the concern, that it would cause a cat, a traffic issue.
Wayne Dan-Gardner.
I've just, Robert Jacobson, I, having been on this board for ten years, I agree with Don. We've waived parking for other businesses. We've tried to encourage businesses and neighborhoods that have struggled. I mean, I'm willing to at least give him, you know, four or five spots, kick it back to ZBA, let them decide if they want to give the variance, now if there's a hardship based on, you know, the factors that are required. We have talked about zoning code. We've talked about, there's many uses in a city that require, uh, uh, parking spaces that, you know, are taxing on properties when they don't necessarily need them. I just, we've pushed a lot of people in lots uptown. We've pushed a lot of people in lots downtown. I'm just, you know, now midtown is starting to flourish. I just don't want to see anyone get cut off at their knees.
Dan Gordon, do you want to speak?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to speak to the board privately.
Okay.
Kevin, you want to, did Kevin want to say something?
Just a, this is Kevin Roach. Just a question, if the, uh, ZBA does grant that waiver, how does that affect us next month?
ZBA cannot grant a waiver. There is no process for the ZBA to grant a waiver. They can grant a variance based on very clear criteria that is set forth in state law. Okay, so you got to get your terms, you know, uh, we're talking apples and oranges here.
Okay.
An application in front of the ZBA for a variance, there are certain criteria that have to be met for them to grant that variance. You can grant a parking waiver based on also very clear criteria that is set forth in the city code. And as Sue has pointed out, this application doesn't meet that criteria. And I can explain that further to you in a private attorney-client session, but this relates to, um, you know, legal advice, legal interpretation that's not appropriate for a public meeting.
Okay. Everybody have access to that emergency number?
We, we cut the call out on our cell phone, or?
Uh, yes. Mute yourself on your, on the, uh, on the, uh, this meeting. Okay?
Well, there would need to be, I mean, if you, if the, if the board feels that it is necessary, uh, then you need to make a motion and a second and vote to go into that attorney-client conference. Otherwise, you can move forward with a, a motion to address a waiver or not. Those are your options.
Uh, at this time, I'll make a motion that we go into attorney-client conference. Do I have a second on that?
Second. Robert Jacobson.
Second by Robert. Okay, all in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Chuck Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Richard Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Okay.
At this time, then, I'm going to ask all of the board members to mute yourselves and put yourself off video and make that call privately. Robert and Vince, I need you to take yourselves off camera, please. Robert, thank you. Vince? Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we're back. Wayne? There's Wayne. Wayne, I need you to unmute yourself.
He's on the phone, it looks like, so.
Hello?
Hi, yes, just for everybody out there, we're waiting for our chairman to come back on. I believe he's coming on now, so just a couple more minutes. I believe he's coming on now, so just a couple more minutes.
Okay, hi there. Is everybody back?
Yes, Wayne.
All right, um, so, I know that parking is a sticking point for our, many of our board members, and I happen to be one of them. I know we've, we've waived parking before for other businesses around the area. But for me, the 33 spots is kind of a sticking point. That, you know, it's to go to that lot on, by the Sea Deli is asking quite a bit of it, quite a bit for that. How does everybody else feel? I know we've probably been beaten this, this, this quite, quite frequently here. But how's, how's the rest of the board feel about that right now?
Wayne, Eric has his hand up again, if you'd.
Go ahead, Eric.
Hi, thank you, Wayne. I just wanted to, I'm not sure if this is for the ZBA or for the planning board. But the, the reason for the 33 spots, which we recognize is a large amount, is because, mostly because of our outdoor area, which is 2,000 square feet in our plan, which is 20 spots just from our outdoor seating. So 20 of the 33 comes from that. And we are more than happy to come to a compromise and lessen our outdoor area in order to cut down on our necessary parking. And when we go in front of the ZBA next month, we're going to tell them that as well.
Okay.
Okay, so for example, you know, if we cut our outdoor space in half, then we go from 33 to 23 spots. And we are more than happy to do that. Thank you.
Okay.
Wayne, Dan Gartenstein has his hand up.
Yeah, I just want to clarify again that while I appreciate what Eric has stated, this is not a negotiation. Basically, there's an application placed in front of the board. The board has to make a determination. And if the board does not approve the application as presented, you know, the applicant needs to submit a different application. It's not a matter of, you know, discussion and a give and take where, you know, you can try to negotiate a, you know, a different configuration. If you do not believe that this configuration and this building, you know, and this proposal is going to be approved by this board, what should be done at this point is that the proposal should be withdrawn and resubmitted with a different configuration that requires fewer parking spots that you can accommodate.
Okay, this is Wayne Platt again. So can we table this right now? Or do we deny it and then have them come back with a reset, with a different proposal? That's, that's, that's a question for you. For Dan?
From my understanding is that they have, we can, we only have 10 spots at Sea Deli. So either way, the parking can't be waived, so they got to go back to ZBA.
It doesn't sound like we haven't had the choice. I think as is, we have to deny the waiver at this point.
And I believe you also have to.
That's my understanding.
And I believe you also have to act on the underlying application unless it is withdrawn.
So if we deny then today, does it mean they have to go through a whole resubmission process with new fees? That's what I, I'm trying to avoid that part of it. New fees and everything else like that. Sue?
I believe yes.
Can we table and ask them to come back with a new configuration? That's, that's my, that's my underlying question then.
You certainly have the option to table the matter on the condition that they submit an amended plan.
Okay, all right.
You're basically amending the currently pending application. Sue, you're okay with that?
Yes.
How's the rest of the board feel about right now? And I'll get to you in a second, Eric, I'm sorry.
Can, can you just restate what it is we're doing? I'm, I'm getting a little, I just want to, can you, can you state what it is that we're going to be voting on?
Well, I'm, I'm asking the board how they feel about tabling tonight and asking the applicant to come back with a new configuration to be considered at a future meeting. Maybe it'll be next meeting. That way, they don't have to, you know, we're not denying it. And then that forces them to, to resubmit, to, to submit a new application with a new set of fees and everything else. So that's what I want to.
When they resubmit, the plan has to accommodate the parking? Is that my understanding?
When they table, they would have.
When they reconfigure their plan, when they reconfigure their plan, it has to accommodate the parking that they're going to need with the new plan? That's what I'm not understanding.
That would be your decision to make, Mary Jo. I mean, they are going to reconfigure and resubmit a plan. And you as a board are going to make a determination as to whether or not they have satisfied your concerns. I'm going to table it with the, with them having leave to amend their application, that we get an agreement on the record from the applicant, then any timeframes that are set forth in the code for determination are waived. Otherwise, without that stipulation, my recommendation would be just to vote on it this evening.
Because they, okay, I, I guess I'm just a little confused. So I thought we were told that we couldn't waive because we can't come up with the parking in another way.
We're not waiving right now.
But when they.
A waiver would not be. Saying if they come back to us next month with amended plan, but they still need more than 10 spots, we can't waive the spots because there's only 10 at Sea Deli. So then they're still going to have to go to ZBA.
Correct, but then they will be going to the ZBA with a plan that has been reconfigured and vetted by this board and basically endorsed by this board, you know, based on your review. And then the ZBA can determine whether or not they want to grant a variance or not.
Eric, you, go ahead, Eric.
Hi, thank you. I know this is getting confusing. We were planning on, no matter what the determination was tonight, to go in front of the ZBA at their next meeting with a revised plan with less parking. So I thought that we would hopefully get approved by them and then come back to you with that approval plus all, with the new plan and all the other issues that were brought up in the staff notes, like the landscaping and garbage collection and all that. So I'm not sure if this helps, but we are, we are submitting new plans to the ZBA. That's what they want us, they told us basically to do that. Once we get an answer from the planning board about the Sea Deli lot, which can't meet the parking requirements, then to go back to them with our new plan for a lower amount of parking.
So Wayne, at this point, let's just decide on the parking, whether we want to give any spaces to Sea Deli or not. So at least when they go to zoning, zoning knows the position of the planning board. And then let's table the application till next month when they submit a new plan. And I presume the applicant will waive the notice, the time requirements so that this can be done.
Yeah, so that's exactly what ZBA has wanted us to come here for, is an answer about the lot and then to go back to them.
Okay, this is.
All right, so.
Are you going to put that in a motion?
Well, the question is, does the board want to give any spots or not? And I think based on the prior conversation, I'm hearing no from Mary Jo, no from Wayne, but I haven't heard from the other board members.
Chuck?
I'd be a no also.
Matt?
I'd go with no.
Okay, so I think Wayne will make a motion that the planning board does not waive any parking requirements through the use of the Sea Deli parking lot.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yeah.
I will second that, this is Wayne Platt. All right, all in favor of that, that motion? Wayne Platt is a yes. Chuck Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
And Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Okay, that, waiver. Go ahead, Robert.
Robert, are you going to make another motion? You're muted.
No, I, I think that the, the question is, is the applicant willing to waive the notice or the time requirements for the application to be decided for the record?
Yes.
Okay, so then I'll make a motion that we table the application till next month so that the applicant has time to resubmit a new plan.
With the applicant's waiver.
With the applicant's waiver, yes, right?
Yes.
I will second that motion, this is Wayne Platt. Any discussion right now on that before we vote? Okay, Wayne Platt is a yes. Chuck Palaco?
Is a yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
All right, motion is carried. All right. Eric, good luck at ZBA, all right?
Yes, thank you, everyone, I appreciate it, and we'll see you next month.
And thank you all board members for the healthy discussion on this, on this particular matter. All right, moving on to item number 15 is 127 Greenkill Avenue, site plan to establish a community center, sexual blocking lot of 109-2-32, secret determination, zone R2, mixed-use overlay district, Ward 4, 127 Greenkill Avenue LLC. Care of Scott Dutton is the applicant owner. Scott, you're here, right?
I am, as is Cassandra Metzger from the, representing the Minovo Foundation.
All right, so last month, we tabled this to get some, submit to the county. And we have received some comments from that, from them. On the right page.
All right. That's correct, and Sue and Kyla were kind enough to forward those comments to us. And we're agreeable to, to them. And I sent Sue a memo today asserting the same.
So just to read into, into record what the required modifications are. Lighting details should be submitted and should include all cutoff fixtures slash dark sky compliant LED fixtures. We also have, okay, let's finish with that first. You have, we have an advisory comment, landscaping plans should be submitted and include street trees along Greenkill Avenue and an advisory comment, inclusion of a bike rack is recommended. And Sue, just to confirm, and I do have the note here, the letter here from Scott. They have reviewed the comments and are taking no exception to the requests regarding the lighting or the installation of a bike rack on the site. Regarding the landscaping, we are working with a landscape architect to develop a thoughtful landscaping plan for the site that we intend to present to you when it is more, more fully developed. As the landscaping would not go in until the spring or summer of 2021, I trust that we'll be able to satisfy your office, the board and the community at large with a landscape plan that everyone can be proud of. So Sue, you're, you're happy that, you're satisfied that all of those required modifications and advisory comments have been met?
Yes, the board would have to vote on the county's recommendations, accepting all of them as submitted. And based on Scott's response, I would say that the staff is comfortable working with the applicants to finalize the plan to address these issues.
And as in other applications that we've had come across this board, this is for the board members, I know we've left a lot of landscaping issues, left those details up to be approved at staff level. Does everybody on the board okay with that for this particular applicant? You're good? Okay. All right, so do we need to vote separately on that, Sue, that we've accepted? That they, they've taken care of county comments, or we could include that in the end?
You should vote separately on that. And you can, you don't have to do it visually, you can do it in a, in a package that you agree with all of the Ulster County comments that were returned. And you also accept the memo from the applicant with respect to the comments and submissions.
I'll make that.
Okay, and can we do? Who, who is that, Robert?
Robert, I'll make that motion.
Okay. And I will second that motion. All in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Is a yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Joe Wiltshire?
Yes.
Gillis?
Yes.
That is adopted. Okay. So we really talked about everything else at the last meeting, didn't we? Sue?
Um, I'm sorry, I was writing. The, yeah, there are a couple of things, though, I don't know that we need to go over them. We made.
One thing I see. Go ahead.
We need to know, Scott, will there be any outward mechanical equipment installed for utilities, security, anything along those lines?
There are, I mean, this is for all intents and purposes a residential scale project. So there are a couple of small heat pump condensing units. They're located on the east side of the building. They're included in the complete set of building drawings. They're, they're one of the last pages, but we're utilizing heat pumps. So it'd be no different than any other single-family residence in the community.
Okay.
And the intention with the, with the lighting, just so everyone knows, is to have something that feels familiar and residential in nature and sort of in contrast to some of the, to what currently exists at the Boys and Girls Club with, with the wall pack units.
Now, what about signage? Are you proposing any signage on this building just to identify it for any particular reason?
We talked to Peter Buffett about this, and we do think that signage would be appropriate, but they haven't contemplated it yet. So that would be something that we would bring back to the board at a later date. but they haven't contemplated it yet, so that would be something that we would bring back to the board at a later date after they've had a thoughtful discussion about where, how big, and what the particular font and style wants to be. Right now, just, you know, since the board and I have worked together for so many years, you can appreciate that we're going into winter, and with city policy, we can't pull a building permit until we receive site plan approval. So we're, we have a contractor in place. That contract has been awarded with the Menovo Foundation. We'd like to get started. We recognize that there are a couple of landscaping nuanced details to work out. And as I alluded to in the memo, we've got all winter to bring that back to staff, and if at any point Sue and Kyla, you think that the board would want to see a full thoughtful presentation, we'd be more than happy to do that. We've got about nine months of construction ahead of us. And you've heard Peter state his goals and his mission, so, you know, we'll come back as often as you want us to, to discuss any little details.
Can I just, with regard to the signage, you're, they're in an R2 zone, so it's very limited as the size of the sign. I think it's like six square feet is what's allowed. If the board is okay with that coming back to staff also, rather than coming back to the, to the board for that, unless you're planning on going for variance, of course, for size.
And we haven't really talked about it, other than the fact that we did discuss signage in the big picture, and Peter said, you know, I have no idea. I want to, I want to think about this. So it would fall within those parameters, or we would come back around and run the gauntlet.
So if the board is okay with wa, you know, waiving it coming back if it's under that six square feet allowed in zoning, that's an option.
And Cassandra is here. Cassandra, have I said anything that is inconsistent with what we've discussed?
Absolutely, spot on. We, again, we're happy to come back as frequently as the board would like, but I think as Scott stated, we are anxious to get started, and signage seems so far away. But it would, it would be great if, if we do stay within the requirement for R2, if that could be waived, and if there's discussion where there's a desire to go outside of that, we would just come back immediately or apply for the variance.
I mean, Peter consistently calls this a house.
Yes, we do.
All right, so Wayne, I have no issue with in the motion, we leave the signage at staff level, and obviously if it's outside the parameters, it'll come back to the board. And let's leave the lighting and the landscape detail to staff as well, so we can approve this and they can make a decision on it, so they can possibly move forward.
One other, that's good, Robert. Another thing I see on my notes here is, Sue, we discussed the plan must show an area for reserved parking.
Correct, yeah. The plan will just need to have notations placed on it that that open green lawn area is an area reserved for off-street parking, should the need arise, and that if that happens, that the applicant will come back to the board with the parking lot design plan to show the lighting landscaping for that drainage system, layout, et cetera, and that would include widening the drive at the same time.
Wayne, that is something that Sue and I discussed, and we appreciate the board's consideration there and having a nicer site and until, and if we should ever need it. And that is something that I discussed with the landscape architect to make sure that they took into consideration with planning out site.
Anything else?
Refuse was another open question that we still have. Has there been any consideration of doing shared services with the Boys and Girls Club? Or is this just going to be done privately, and are you planning to use city collection or private collector?
That, that's a great idea. Honestly, we hadn't talked about that. I know that the refuse demand or load at this site is going to be quite minimal. And I think that we had said, it might have been, might have been before the ZBA or your board last month, that we anticipated like two totes, one for garbage and one for recycling. But that's certainly something that we can discuss with Dan at the Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah.
Nobody likes having those totes, you know, laying around, so. And I just think that it would be city pickup for this site just because the demand is so limited. If we can get rid of the totes, that would be a bonus, so.
Okay, so we'll just leave that open to you, looking at that and talking to Dan and possibly sharing.
Yeah, no, it's a great idea. It would clean up this site if we could make that happen, for sure.
Okay. That was all that I had.
Right. Anybody else have any questions from the board? Okay. So under seeker, this is a type 2 action, so no further review of the board is required. Sue, do you want to go over the list of things, the conditions and the board policies that will be included in this?
I will start with the board policies. We have 4, 4A, 6, 7, 7A, 10, 11, 13, 14, 14A, 19, 25, and 26. And the, okay. Would be that signage, if consistent with what is currently allowed under zoning, can go through at staff level for the review and approval. Otherwise, it will return back to the board. Staff will be authorized to approve the lighting and the landscaping plans, and that a notation on the plan will be added to, to show the reserved future parking area and return to the board if that is necessary. That's it.
All right, and county comments, that's all. We don't need to put that in there, we're good?
You did county comments separately.
Yeah. So that, I'm going to make that a motion that we approve by.
Do we have blue stone sidewalk down there?
It's not currently blue stone.
I don't think it is.
It's concrete. It's concrete.
Okay.
Okay, so with, with all those items that Sue just mentioned, I'm going to put that in the form of a motion to approve item number 15. Do I have a second on that? Second by Charles Palaco. All in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Is a yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Eric Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved. All right, thank you, folks. Scott? Have a good night.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 16 is 2-6 Montrapos Avenue. Site plan to make changes to drainage. Section block and lot is 56.42-4-7. Seeker determination, zone triple R, coastal zone, heritage area, Ward 9. Andrew Wright is the applicant. Blue Stone Realty is the owner. Is Andrew here?
Sonia is here.
I'm here.
Yeah, he made it back. Yes, he was in the city, but he made it back. Thank you, everyone, for having us so late.
There were comments. I know this is not a public hearing, but just recognize the comments, please, that we received from the public.
And one, two, how many were there total here? Three, four?
There were three. Yeah, there were three. We posted four because one of them had a correction.
Okay.
And things were added to it.
They will be available on the website?
They are, right now.
Okay, so there are four comments for that. Okay, so let's see. The application is to address drainage issues on the site, clean up a property, and to remove dead trees. Do you want to, Sonia and Andrew, do you want to go into what your proposal is here?
Yeah, we are basically, this site has been somewhat had a lot of garbage dumped on it, so we want to clear it out so that we have less people on it and taking a lot of, a lot of trespassing, a lot of stuff. So we want to clear it out so we can see what's going on. We also have a outage from a spring which is on a different property. We found in our research that there's a spring underneath 2024 West Chestnut that houses were built on, so it's been blowing out here, which for 20 years, we've owned the lot, we've been trying to manage this, and the city was great. This, the spring used, the blowout used to go right into the street and take all the dirt and leaves with it, but the city gave us a catch basin on our property down at the lower end. And what we're trying to do is, right now, it's running over the grate and picking up all the garbage and stuff and clogging it. So we want to encapsulate and control this runoff into the city-provided catch basin on our property, so that it won't keep clogging it up. Regarding taking out some of the trees down in the lower section, many of people have said that they want this opened up for better views, for traffic on that corner. People go through there very quickly. So this would help us open up the last bit to allow the visibility for the safety of people zooming through there until the traffic is addressed in the future.
And just to clarify, we're not stopping the runoff, we're just creating catch basins and redirecting it to the existing manhole that has been provided from the city, and it's been there for quite a long time. And as a matter of fact, you could see, I'm not sure if the board members have been able to go to the site, but you can see how, at one point, it used to go all the way down in the Matty intersection. What is that, the road going down the hill?
Oh, ravine.
Yeah, so the city took it upon themselves to put it in within the boundaries of the private property manhole that's connected to a storm drain, and it goes where it's been going for all these years. So we're not adding any runoff, it's just runoff that has been going into the same place for all these years.
And we're not blasting.
No.
Okay, this is Wayne Platt. So with, with proposals like this, even in the past, we've had come through this board. For me personally, we like to, I like to have it looked upon by the city engineer to sit, to review the proposal before we're, before we are able to vote on it. And I think that this, this proposal warrants that type of, of, of review. Does the rest of the board feel that way as well?
I, I agree.
Give a thumbs up if you want.
That's Chuck, I agree.
Okay.
Matt, I agree.
I agree.
All right, so Andrew and Sonia, we would, I mean, I would be inclined to table this for the month and to have it, give it to the city engineer's office, like I said, to have them look at it, get another set of eyes laid on it, and come back with some comments, and it'll be able to give us a better idea of what we're, of what we're approving, okay?
Absolutely, yes.
That's fine.
We'll look forward to meeting with the engineer, and anyone from the board who would like to come and see the site and through your own eyes, seeing what I'm seeing every time you stop by, are more than welcome. We can give them access.
We may come as well for doing a site visit too, so. All right, so at this time, make, go ahead, you have something else?
It's all good, Wayne.
So, so at this time, I'll make a motion that we table item number 16 to allow the city engineer to review this proposal. Do I have a second on that?
Second, Chuck.
Second by Charles Palaco, all in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson? Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
That is passed. Okay, Andrew and Sonia, thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, good night now. Okay, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, item number 17 is being removed from our agenda because this is a common council matter and not a planning board matter. So moving on to item number 18. It is number 39 Broadway. Site plan to establish a cafe/market in an existing building. Secret determination. Sorry, section block and lot 56.43-5-21. Seeker determination, zone RT, Ward 8. Anthony Sasso, Rosie General LLC is the applicant. Charles Blakeman is the owner. Who do we have here?
You have Scott Dutton and Anthony Sasso here.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Hey, everybody.
Yeah, this, this, not much verbiage on this. You want to just tell us what your plans are here?
Sure, I'll, I'll start. Charles bought the building a couple of years ago. Those of us that have been around in Kingston know it as the Skilly Pot Building. Anthony and I started talking about nine months ago, and he was looking for a place to open a new market, a small cafe. Anthony's a local Sawgerties kid who went away and worked in some of the top restaurants in New York City and LA, and he's back home and wants to open sort of your classic deli café that I think everyone sort of imagines in their fantasy world of what, what you want in a neighborhood establishment, so. Anthony, you want to add anything?
Sure, been away for a while, but did a lot of searching around the area, looking for a perfect space, a perfect neighborhood, perfect building for the concept. We did look in Sawgerties, we looked in Woodstock. This building came out of nowhere. It basically hit the market. We jumped on it two days later after the sign went up, the broker sign. Fell in love with the bones, fell in love with the history, going to try to do as little as possible to, to the feel of it, still make it feel like kind of Skilly Pot never left, and before that, Greenwald, which I guess used to be a shoe spot. They still have a lot of remnants too, including their tiling still on the name in the front door, so definitely want to try to incorporate what both of those businesses brought to the area. And, you know, the rondad has those three monster restaurants between Old Savannah and Savona's and Mariners, and this is kind of be a little bit more of like an intimate place for the neighbor to take advantage of as far as groceries. We're going to do New York beer only, New York wine only, and casual feel. We're going to do New York beer only, New York wine only and casual feel. We'll do, if we can get some outdoor seating, we'll do that. Seems like the other few restaurants really capitalize on that. But a more go-to spot to kind of like, I think COVID's taught a lot of people that the more you can offer to the neighborhood in the area, the better. So we're going to do breakfast, lunch, dinner, takeout, bread, pastries and suppers every night.
Okay, sounds nice.
Yeah, me, sisters are involved, named after my mom, and my dad's building it, so we're basically like, you know, giving it all back to where we grew up, so. Couldn't have found a better location.
Anthony's a, Anthony's father is a contractor that we've worked with in the past, so his name may be familiar to you, so.
Any, any exterior changes to the building? I see lighting, anything going on there?
We, we're going before landmarks and heritage area, minimal changes to the exterior. The changes that are proposed, I think will be applauded by landmarks in that Anthony is interested in making the investment in removing the wood panels that replaced the, the glass above the storefront windows. Scroll back a little bit, you'll see that we found an archival image that inspired him to restore those windows. But other than that, nothing of note. A freshen up on the job, but keeping the existing colors. There's, there's one other image where you can see that's, yeah, you can see above the storefront windows that there were the, the small fret glass windows. So we're exploring that right now, we'll comment on that remarks, but in terms of site plan review, what we've put in the application is what he'd like to put in front, front of the board for approval with a couple of outdoor seats. Other than that, just a freshen up overall.
Deliveries are going to be on the Beale Street side?
Yes.
Yep.
Scott, this is Sue.
See my notes here. Go ahead, Sue.
Scott, have you given any consideration to approaching the council and asking for a designated loading zone along a Beale Street so that that area is reserved for that type of a use? And you don't end up with a double parking situation?
We, we've talked about it conceptually, but have not had the opportunity to discuss it in detail with Corporation Council and make that application. If, if this board is supportive of that request, that would certainly go a long way to helping us make that ask.
I think it would make sense to do that, you know, for purposes of the building. Given that your hours of operation, you're going to want, I, I don't know what your schedule, maybe Anthony, you can answer that. What you anticipate in terms of the frequency of deliveries and the scheduling of, you know, when and the number of days per week? Are they daily deliveries to your business or?
As far as the, the non-shelf sable stuff, we probably going to do those twice a week or three times a week. Produce might have to come a little bit more frequently than that, but if everything does come in those early hours between, you know, as early as six, we'll have bakers there in the middle of the night, so. If we can get delivery trucks there when or before we open, before 9:00 AM, before 10:00 AM. I do know those, there's two or three spots right in front, two metered spots that they've been open every single time I've driven down there, basically four times a week, so. That could be a spot that those trucks could park in if it's available on the Broadway side. It does get a little bit trickier on a Beale, just on how they figure out how to get down the hill. I don't want them to back into a Beale. But those spots, I don't know if some of the residents around there use those or not, because they're, I don't believe are metered on that side.
No, you're right, they are not.
On the Beale side, it might affect that, there's a little beauty shop there, no? I mean, would that affect their parking on that side or?
It could. I think, I don't know what time they open, especially with COVID. I don't know if they open at 12 or if they're open in the morning as well.
Well, I think Mary Jo is alluding to the fact that if you designate one of those spaces delivering, then it moves their ability to utilize that space for their parking, their customer parking.
If I'm not mistaken, the council can designate a delivery area for certain times of the day.
Correct, yes.
I, I really appreciate you bringing this up tonight. We didn't want to make too big of an ask of the, the board at this time or complicate Anthony's approval, but you all know all too well that planning board support goes a long way in front of the council. So I would suggest that prior to next month's application, we refine our ask and I'll bring it back to you, Sue, and you can canvass the board and if we can get a letter of support out of the planning board at next month's meeting, then that would be a early Christmas gift for the applicant.
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll leave it to the board, but I don't know that there's a need for you to come back at this point. I, I'm comfortable with the board making a decision this evening, if they're comfortable.
I agree.
Well, that would make it an early Thanksgiving Christmas gift.
I, I would be fine with it as long as it's not, if, if you can word it in a way where it wouldn't affect that, that other smaller business on the Beale side, depending on where you're going to ask for the loading zone.
So Anthony, just not, I, and I feel bad taking any more of the board's time tonight, getting granular on, on this because you've been at it since six o'clock tonight for a tough night. Anthony, the board's willing to support your request for a loading zone during certain given hours. Do you want to, do you want to take them up on that offer right now and refine that, or do you want to come back next month?
Sure, and if it's too much.
Is this something where you can set the hours at staff level based on, you know, looking at the property over the next few days? I mean, I, I mean, if you set a timeline, sometime in the morning, doesn't affect other businesses as a board member. It doesn't matter to me, I think a loading zone is needed and I could leave that at staff.
I agree with that.
I, I'd be happy to put them on, in the, the spots right in front of the building. Will they be able to use, be used by the other businesses on Broadway further south or further down the hill?
Yes, if it's designated a loading zone, it's designated a loading zone, it's not particular to one business, so. Other businesses would use it, but if the hours are limited, that's the hours that's limited for that particular purpose, then other than, outside of that, it could be used for regular parking.
Sure, I think everyone on the hill would be really into that. It would be super advantageous to put it right on the corner with no cars being able to park behind them, and then they can make their deliveries a lot easier. And then we can.
Right, so what Robert suggested gives us the opportunity to refine the language with Sue Cahill and Kyla and make sure that it's perfected and we can make a strong argument to the common council, so I thank you all.
Thank you.
So with regards to parking, this is Wayne. There's no parking on the site, so we have to consider to request for a waiver then, right, or waiving the parking requirement? We're, Sue, we are within.
Yes, yes, you do. Yes, the prior space was at retail was one space for 300. The requirement for this use is one space for three seats or one space for 100. So we calculated it based on the seating and we came up with 16 spaces required for this current use.
And how much, what, how much spaces were, many spaces were needed for the previous use?
We calculated. Scott, what is the square footage?
Give me a second, I can get there, but it's, Anthony, you might remember off the top of your head, are we looking at 3,000 square feet? 3,000 square feet, so it would have been 10 spaces, that's my recollection.
So it's really just a, a net increase of six spaces then, right?
Correct.
All right.
Yeah.
And this is, if this, while there are seats, it's more of a cafe kind of setup where there's, this is a market, this is a grab and go kind of mercantile operation, so you, it's not that dissimilar from the business that was there previously.
Wayne, you want to make a motion? This is Wayne, I'm going to make a motion that we waive the parking requirements. Do I have a second on that? Second by Robert Jacobson. All in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Chuck Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Pat Gillis?
Yes.
Okay, parking is waived. Anything else, Sue?
Um, no, the only issue would be signage that is left, so.
Well, they're going to.
And we're comfortable with having that come back to staff if the board is comfortable. Letting, allowing staff to review that, it'll be, as long as it's compliant with zoning. The signage will also have to go through landmarks and heritage as well, so there is additional review other than just staff on it.
I have no issue with that.
Okay. Everybody's good with that?
Good.
So that, that, Sue, ready?
So I, I have basically board policies and then other conditions. If you'd like me to read them off, I don't know if the members have anything else, but what I have in terms of board policies would be 6, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 14A, 19, 23, 24, 25, 26. Reviews required from the Heritage Area Commission and the Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission that the board recommends the applicant seek a designated loading zone on a Beale Street and agrees to allow staff to work with the applicant to define hours and refine that request to the common council. And that signage, once determined, as long as it is compliant with zoning, to come back to staff for review and approval.
Sue, the only thing is, I, I don't know that it was agreed that it would be on a Beale Street. I was hearing that maybe Broadway was a better location for the trucks.
Correct.
Correct.
I think that was going to be.
A Broadway.
Broadway's a better location?
Okay, I made that change.
All right, before I make that emotion, I'm just going to read it to record that under seeker, this is a type 2 action, no further review of the board is required. So with all of those items that Sue has illustrated, I will put that into, to the form of a motion to approve item number 18. Do I have a second? Second by Robert. All in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Chuck Palaco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Pat Gillis?
Yes.
Item number 18 is approved.
Can't thank the board enough, thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck.
Take care. Okay, coming into the home stretch here. Item number 19 is 38 Main Street Site Plan Amendment to Add a Temporary Pergola to the Outdoor Dining Area. Section block and lot is 48.331-6-8. Secret Determination Zone 02, Heritage Area, Stockade Historic District, Ward 2, Hudson Valley Fair LLC is the applicant owner. And who do we have here representing them tonight? Did we lose that person?
No, Wayne, Scott Dutton here and Tavo Summer.
Okay, I don't, I see Tavo is not, is he on?
Here.
Tavo's on by phone.
Okay, so your, so pergola is.
Wayne, Wayne, Kevin has hand up.
Okay, go ahead, Kevin.
Just, I just want to point out that I think I observed that this pergola has already been built.
Yes, it has.
Okay, just.
Can't hear you, Tavo. Okay, just so we know that you're, you can hear us and we can hear you.
All right, so Scott, go ahead and tell us about this, this then.
But before I give an explanation, Tavo, can you sound off so that we know that you can hear us and we can hear you? Tavo? He's.
The phone on?
Yeah, I just. I just unmuted you, okay?
How's that, is that better?
Oh, that's great, thanks, Tavo. Yeah, but if you don't mind, I'll, I'll give a little bit of background here and then ask Tavo to, to share his perspective on this. Kevin, you're absolutely right, this temporary structure has been constructed already. As the board is aware, with, with the pandemic, there are a lot of temporary structures that have been constructed throughout the city. And everyone's sort of wrestling with this, this challenge. We prepared a drawing, erected this temporary structure, there, it, it does not have a foundation, it was done quickly while the drawings were being submitted. Building Safety Division advised that we should start the process. To my knowledge, there are dozens of properties throughout the city that have also erected temporary structures that are going to have to catch up with this process, so. Charles Blakeman, the owner of the property, apologizes for not being able to be here tonight in person, but Tavo Summer is his partner in Lola Pizza and is here to, to take any ownership questions, so.
So this is just basically an overhang to, for the dining area then, right? I mean, that's, that's what we're talking about.
Correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. The, the timing of the opening of Lola Pizza and the, and the pandemic couldn't have been worse, they had, they had staffed up and trained and then March 18th hit and they're just trying to survive, which Tavo could speak to more eloquently than I can.
Yeah, I mean, we, we got our liquor license probably towards the end of February. And then probably about three weeks later, the pandemic hit. And then as temporary structures were being allowed, we, and as the weather was, you know, getting colder, we thought that this was a temporary structure, so we erected it similar to the one that we erected outside of the hotel. So again, it was just in reaction to trying to, you know, protect the outdoor seating area from the weather. And as Scott mentioned, there's no foundation and it's built as a temporary structure.
And I, I should add that they experimented with a, with a sale, with an awning. And I, I should add that they experimented with a, with a sale with an awning type cloth solution that uh ended very badly and caused them to have to, to close for, on a busy night. But they've been trying to keep all of their staff employed and just stretch this until things, you know, are, are normal again.
So Scott, I guess just to summarize, what, what's the ask? Just for the existing uh outdoor structure uh to remain for a certain period of time or?
Well, we're, we're in a public meeting, uh the meeting's being recorded, um, so I want to be delicate and respectful. Um, but part of me feels like we might not be here if it wasn't for a complaint. So that prompted us to expedite uh the, the process.
And I, and that, and I understand COVID, I understand all the restaurants are struggling and with the weather, the conditions being in the Northeast, I totally get the need. So I guess the question is, what, what, what's the ask tonight? For this temporary structure to stay for a certain period of time, or are we now going to build a permanent structure or what, what?
No, I, I think uh if I had to refine the ask, it would be to find the appropriate words. And Robert, you're better than any of us being an attorney. Um, until we know, until we know, until we, the New York State has guidelines that allow them to operate the way that they intended to when we received our first original approvals, you know?
Scott, maybe, maybe this, well, bottom line, is the department, is the Building Safety Division satisfied that this temporary structure is safe for the duration and maybe an extended period of time? Or are there things that need to be done to make it more, to make it more secure um for more of a long-term existence?
Well, I, I think uh they haven't commented on that. The, and I think that it would be reasonable to bifurcate these two things because my duty and obligation as a licensed professional is to ensure that the structure is safe. We have a structural engineer who has participated in the creation of these drawings. So I, I'm not sure that that really fall in the planning board's purview. And at this point, we have no violation notice with respect to the drawings or the structure or anything that we've prevented, presented. It's more just that it went up, there was a complaint, the building department um informed us that we needed to go to Planning Heritage Area and Landmark. So we started that process as quickly as possible.
So, so I, just to be clear, that the, the items that you have before us are the renditions of what is actually there now?
Correct, and, and any of the board members could go by their um tomorrow and see it actualized. It was put up
I have no issue with it at this point, I mean, it's, it's, it's there, it's tasteful. Everything they've done on this site is tasteful. Uh, I understand the need with regard to uh COVID. And if it um is acceptable to the other commissions, I don't see why we can't allow this for a period of 12 months and then we can reevaluate at that point if that's what the applicant's asking.
We'd be more than happy to come back a year from now and revisit and hopefully by then uh we'll uh, we'll be in a much different place.
So the only, Robert, the only difference from what is there now would be the addition of a corrugated roofing material um to be placed on top of it for, you know, protection from the weather and the elements.
So um it's there.
Oh, it is up already? I, I didn't, I didn't think it was, okay.
Yeah, and, and that's an interesting testament to how discreet it is because I, naturally, I frequent the establishment and um, and it, and I've stopped to pick up pizza uh about a week ago. And I didn't notice it when I was walking in and I was waiting for my pickup and I looked out and said, oh wait, oh, oh, it's, it's in.
When did it go in? Yeah, I didn't notice it either.
Okay.
That's good.
I lose track of days, but the, uh, I want to say that it was a week ago?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Kevin, you have your hand up.
Just a quick question is whether or not that's gonna stay during the winter time? I didn't know if that was a snow load capable roofing.
At this point, it's week by week with uh trying to figure out what we're gonna do there. Um, we did design the structure with the help of a structural engineer to um to have it withstand reasonable loads. I mean, if we get one of these uh snows like we had four or five years ago, then it's, it's intended to be removable, so.
It was more of the, more of the thought of whether or not you'd be using the patio in the winter time anyway. Wondered if you would just take it down for the winter time.
We might, yeah.
Well, we've certainly put a lot of time in this pergola tonight, haven't we? Want to make a motion?
Uh.
So you still, you still have to go to Heritage Area and Landmarks, right?
That is correct.
Sue, have all your questions been answered here and the rest of the board?
I, I'm fine with this, Wayne.
Okay. Everybody else is good, thumbs up?
Quite, the only item I wanted to bring up is that the building department has received complaints in the past about the refuse containment area in the rear. So I'd just like to put it on the record and, and hopefully, Tavo, you'll take this back with you is just to make sure that that's managed appropriately and emptied more routinely as it's needed. Um, overflow was the primary issue that the building department received complaints on. So it's really just a management, so just kind of keep your eye and watch on that, please.
Sure, will do.
Okay, um, so under seeker, this is a type two actions, so no further review of the board is required. Um, Sue, does, is there anything? I mean, what, your list is probably very small about what's gonna go in here with conditions, what do you got?
I have uh board policies six, 10, 12, and 19. And um positive reviews returned from the Heritage Area Commission and Historic Landmark Preservation Commission.
Okay. All right, so I'll put her comments and uh board policies into the form of a motion to approve item number 19. Uh, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second, second by Mary Jo Wiltshire, all in favor, Wayne Platt is a yes. Chuck Palacco?
Yes.
Robert Jacobson?
Yes.
Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Okay, that is passed.
Right.
All right, Scott, thank you so much.
All right, thank you guys.
All right. Okay, um, as I had mentioned in the beginning of the meeting, uh, item number 20, we're under discussion now. Uh, item number 20 has been postponed at the request of the applicant. So we will not be discussing that tonight. Uh, moving on to item number 21, rezoning recommendation. Recommendation to Common Council on rezoning multiple parcels in the areas commonly referred to as Golden Hill and Lawton Park in Perren's Common Council Resolution Number 153 of 2020. From zones triple R and R1, one family residence. O2, which is limited office, M1, which is light manufacturing, and C3, general commercial. Two, R6, multiple residence, seeker determination zone triple R. Uh, R1, O2, M1, and C3, wards three and five, Kingston Common Council Action, multiple owners. Okay, um, we're gonna recognize that this has been forwarded to us at this time. What else we have on?
Wayne, this is Sue, there was one individual that texted that wanted to speak on this. However, this is not a public hearing, um, it is only a recommendation that the planning board gives to the common council. Um, that individual was Mr. Colangelo, um, I don't know if he is still on the line, but my recommendation would be that he submit a comment in writing that could be considered by the planning board um prior to making a recommendation.
Okay. I, I concur with that. And he, he lives up by, by, at the top of Glen Street, right? That's where his residence is?
He is a resident of Glen Street, yes.
All right, um we're not gonna be acting on this tonight, but uh, cause we'll have a, we have a timeframe where we have to get back to the common council on this, Sue.
Uh, yes, we have 45 days.
Okay. Um.
Mr. Colangelo just texted me, he is on the line, I believe.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Colangelo, if you're one of the callers, do I, does the board wish to give him a couple of minutes?
Robert, go ahead.
I have no issue with it, we hear from people routinely, so.
Okay.
Mr. Colangelo on the phone? Anyone on the line?
Sue, you might have to unmute that him, it seems like that's the way the way it'll work. Looks like number 31, maybe?
I don't know, Mr. Colangelo? Mr. Colangelo? Mr. Colangelo? Uh, hang on. He's on the line, I'm trying to figure out, um, Mr. Colangelo?
Yes, yes, I'm muted, hello.
Okay, I just unmuted you. Okay. Board has agreed to um give you a few minutes to speak, um, so it's your turn, you're up.
Now, we just really want to acknowledge the fact that uh, you know, commend the, the idea to build housing, but uh you do live in the area. Uh, I've made this uh plea for literally six years. Um, the property atop Golden Hill uh that's slated for redevelopment uh has serious issues with egress and ingress into the property, as does Lawton Park. Um, this is well-known, this is not new, this is not something that I'm bringing to your attention because I don't want housing. Has nothing to do with that, uh, we've submitted petitions. In fact, uh, we had another petition prepared uh for the public hearing that was abruptly canceled at the 11th hour. Uh, we will not stop, this not go away. Um, I will tell you that the process is backwards. Um, I've listened to you tonight talk about uh giving people a, a hard time to build six apartments because of sightline issues. They're trying to build 300 to 500 housing units with big terrible sightline issues with uh traffic volumes that are um exceed the capacity of the roadway that services those properties. So uh we really want you guys to take that into consideration. The, the other thing is, you know, why are we rezoning property without seeing the proposals? I mean, every single project that you've discussed today had a, had a proposal with it. Where's the one for Golden Hill? Why is it in, why is it being kept secret? I mean, how could you rezone something without, without knowing what's gonna be built on it? I mean, we, I, it just seems very, very arbitrary uh with regards to these rules and also the type of class. You know, does this require seeker? Does this require an environmental assessment prior to rezoning? If so, will that happen? You know, we want development, I think it's important, but it needs to be done with everybody in mind. Uh, not just the political interest, it should be done with the residents' interests that have been here already. So I please, I, I hope that uh, you know, you will require the, the proposals to be presented prior to uh rezoning. I think that it seems impossible to consider this without it. Uh, so we will be back, we do have petitions, we do have uh at least 50 to 60 residents lined up. Uh, again, not in opposition to the housing, uh, but in opposition to the impact uh that this project will have. So we really implore you to uh consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Sue, the other guy has hand up.
Oh. Wayne?
Oh, Robert does.
Want to say something?
Yeah, um, I just uh was gonna ask Sue to clarify, there were a couple of corrections that needed to be made to the list of properties um that are potentially going to be rezoned. Uh, I believe there were some digits that were out of place and there was gonna be some discussion with Alderman Tolloman with regard to correcting that list. And Sue had specific concerns about a number of other properties. And before we go forward, if we can just clarify where that is. Um, I understand rules and rules will be addressing this, at least as a preliminary matter next week. Um, and as we've discussed in the past, uh, the code specifically provides a number of different ways that petitions to rezone can be brought forward. One of those ways is by app, by motion by an alderman rather than by application by the developer. Um, this is a situation where the alderman has um brought this forward under a specific provision of the code, which is a very different process than what um has been conducted in the past when the developer or the property owner was bringing it forward.
Right, um, as you see, there's a, a matrix in your staff notes um that Kyla has um put into that. Um, there were some questions, you'll see where the SBL numbers that were provided are numbers that do not exist. So we've taken the liberty of making some assumptions um on them. For example, the first one, we believe it to be the Golden Hill Nursing Home Property. And um that is, so that's one of them. Um, there are a couple others that are um on the list that do not exist, but we believe they're just misnumbered. And we're going to be making those corrections. I am planning to schedule a meeting with Alderman Tolloman this week to sit down and go through this list. I'm waiting for um some mapping out of our engineering department that will better define all of these parcels in a single map um and define them more clearly than the information that has already been submitted and provided. A couple of these are single-family residences, so we question at staff level why they're included. Um, be to be converted from one family active residences to an R6 zoning. Um, one is the um Gateway Community Industries Building that is operating um under M1 zoning, which allows it to operate, but by converting it to an R6, you would create a non-conforming use. So those are questions that um, you know, jumped right out to us. And we want to, I want to review those with the aldermen and look at this and possibly revise this listing um going forward. Um, you have businesses on here, I don't know that they necessarily want to be rezoned because they have very active, successful businesses. And by rezoning them to a residential, uh, you're, you're creating a problem for them if they want to expand or they want to do anything in the future. Um, so that in my mind is something real that we have to take a very hard look at. Um, and there are some interested parties, as Mr. Colangelo said, uh, that the county is working with, but we don't know who they are, we don't have any proposals as of yet. Um, we've had outreach from other people for the Lawton Park properties. Again, no affirmative proposal has been submitted to the city planning board or any agency that the city has for a review. Um, so that is So that is something to be considered, but you have to go back and you have to look at in the staff notes where we basically copied right out of the zoning code, the questions that you will need to address when you prepare your final report. So I want you to take a good look at those and consider those when you're thinking about this rezoning process. And they are, whether such a change is consistent with the objectives and purposes of the district or districts to be affected, the nature and the location of the uses in buildings to be affected and the manner in which they will be affected, and whether uses permitted by the proposed change will be appropriate in the affected areas. And finally, the effect of the change on existing or proposed public facilities and services such as schools, streets, utilities, et cetera. And I think that's one of the key ones that has been made most vocal by the by individuals, by the general public. It's just the traffic issue and the concerns with, you know, the traffic flows and the intersection of Route, with Route 32, which would be the primary intersection for whatever development comes into play.
And for clarification, you're going to be meeting with the alderman in the foreseeable future. And once you clarify with the alderman what the corrections to the list will be and whether he is interested in deleting or changing the specific request based on your comments. You will write that up. You will forward it to this board, so this board will have it in preparation for their deliberation on their recommendation next month.
Absolutely. Yes, we will have additional, like I said, I think we'll have a better map that will outline the areas to be clearer so that individuals can, you can identify it much easier. And I think that was another issue that the public was having with the, some of the documents that they just need to be brought. They need to be increased and improved upon. And I think that's what we're going to work on with Engineering Department as well.
And if you can just forward that as soon as possible, so everyone has an opportunity to review it, including my office, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
For us to meet this week, so.
Okay. And Sue, this is Wayne. Just to clarify, we will not have any public hearing on this, correct?
That is correct. Yeah, no, the public hearing is held at the council level. That hearing has, was scheduled, it was canceled, it has not as of yet been rescheduled. I'm sure that will be a topic of discussion at Laws and Rules next week. But this board does have 45 days to issue its recommendation, which is why we feel very strongly that, and it's significant enough in scale and scope, that the full-time allotment be used. And this matter be tabled this month and brought to next month's meeting. And on the interim, that this commission, that this board give this thought and ask any questions. If you need to speak to me or Kyla directly, feel absolutely free to do so. If you want to go out and look at some of these properties, absolutely, I encourage you to do that. Encourage you to, you know, look at the, look at the impacts that this could potentially have.
Okay.
If I can jump in for one second before Kevin, just to clarify, whether or not the 45-day deadline applies, given that it is a motion from a council member rather than a request from an individual property owner is fairly gray area. I assume that if this board has legitimate, you know, questions that they need to address prior to making their recommendation, that additional time will certainly be provided for those further deliberations. Again, this is not a petition being filed by a property owner where the timeframes are much more strict and could result in some sort of default determination.
That was basically my concern that we wouldn't have enough time, especially now we don't even have a map or a really true list of the properties that we're supposed to be considering. So I'm not sure that 45 days, that only gives us one meeting to review a very important topic.
Yeah, again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about the 45 days. I think that the application needs to be acted on. Certainly expeditiously, but you know, any request for additional time, I'm pretty confident will be honored and there won't be an issue.
Okay. Okay. So like Sue said, you know, take some time, go out and take a look at these properties. Have some questions for, for planning staff, absolutely give them a call, stop in. And, you know, we'll take this back up at the next meeting. So any other comments right now? Okay. So at this time, I'll make a motion that we. Yes.
I just have a question. So is Mr. Gardenstein suggesting that aldermen can unilaterally just go around and decide that they want to rezone property? And if the council agrees, that that, that's how it works? Because what section is he referring to? Because I want to write it down. What exactly the section of the city code is Mr. Gardenstein talking about? Because that doesn't sound like democracy. I want to write it down.
Go to the city code on Ecode. I don't have the exact section number. Under the search bar, type in petition to rezone and the applicable section will come up. It is part of section, it is part of section 405, but I could not tell you off the top of my head what the precise subsection is, the process.
Well, you're throwing it around, you're throwing it around like you know it. You should memorize it. And I will tell you this, one other thing I want to say. The largest, the largest housing project, the largest housing project in the city's history on public land with public money that is being, is being done in a way that doesn't follow the normal process is a major red flag. Get the proposals and let's talk.
This is not a question and answer, and we were nice to allow him the time. At this point, he should be muted.
I'm making a motion that we table item number 21. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Robert Jacobson. All in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Is a yes.
Robert Jacobson? Mary Jo Wiltshire?
Yes.
Matt Gillis?
Yes.
Adopted. Okay. Okay. The other business before this board? I think we're good, Sue.
The, yeah, the only other question I would have is, does the board, is the board interested in doing any site visits for any, any of the projects that we had on the agenda tonight that were tabled and carried over? For example, the Matra Pose, I don't know if anyone is interested in that. The Ward Street, I don't know if anybody is interested in that, looking at that one. I guess not. I just thought I would throw it out there.
I think I. Are you going to send around a map just for Golden Hill, just so we have an idea what we're looking at?
For the rezoning?
Yeah, because I'm just not familiar with the parcels up there.
Yes, yes. I mean, that's the idea is to rehave a new map, redrawing the map so that it's very clear as to which exact properties they are.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn. Who's got a second on that? Robert Jacobson does. Okay, and all in favor? Wayne Platt is a yes. Charles Palaco?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Joe Wiltshire?
Yes.
Gillis?
Yes.
Harry, motion cap. Thank you all. Vince, good seeing you.
Take care.
Alderman Tolloman, thank you.